Yeah, I'm not sure what happened with that. The emails were sent like normal, but for some reason you weren't getting them. Not entirely sure why. Yeah, we're gonna have to get with IT to double check to see why they're not.
It's 5:30. Are we ready to start rolling?
Looks like we are good to go, Mayor.
Okay, good. So we'll call this meeting of the Porterville City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Corello?
President.
Councilmember Penyloza? Councilmember Stowe?
Connecting to audio.
Councilmember Stowe? Vice Mayor Flores? Mayor Reyes?
Here. Okay, thank you. And now that brings us to oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the city council on any matter scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Do we have any comment for closed session items?
Your Honor, we do not have any email submissions from the public for oral communications, and it does not appear that anybody that... Actually, there doesn't appear to be any attendees at the moment, so it looks like we're good to go.
Okay, great. So we can move forward with the closed session items.
Thank your honor, we have five items before this council in closed session this evening. The first pursuant to government code section 5.957.6, counsel labor negotiator, agency negotiator John Lawless, between self-worth employee organizations, Porterville State Peace Officer Association, and Mountain Confidential Series. The second is government code section 54946.95, liability claim claimant Ramon Matajano, agency claimed against city of Porterville. And then three, government code section 54956.9, subsection D, subsection one, counsel legal counsel existing litigation, statewide traffic safety and signs incorporated, the California Professional Engineering Incorporated, Ed Alter County Superior Court case number 284137. And then four, government code section 54946.9, subsection D, subsection three, counsel legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, seven cases in which facts are not yet known to potential plaintiff. And I'm five, government code section 54946.9, subsection D, subsection four, counsel legal counsel existing litigation, initiation litigation, one case.
Okay, thank you. And we will move into closed session and read adjourn at 6:30 PM. And we use the other link, correct?
Right.
See you on the other side.
We'll see you there.
Okay, just a few minutes more while we wait for some more people to transition back over.
Okay, just a few minutes more while we wait for some more people to transition back over.
No, is, uh, is council member Stowe on?
Yeah, it looks like. No, it's not on yet.
Okay, it appears council member Stowe hasn't been able to join us yet. Has he reached out to express any difficulties connecting or? Anything at this point?
I, I tried to text him, he hasn't responded. He, he is saying, he does say he's having technical difficulties.
Okay. Should we wait for him or should we proceed?
I think if you, if the council wishes to, it may proceed and then he can jump on when he, when he, when he's able to. But that, i- if the council wishes.
Council, should we proceed or, or wait?
I think, I think, I think, I think if, is he getting some, I don't know, I don't know how someone can help him, but oh, I think he's.
But, okay. Perfect timing.
Man, I was going with the other one, I'm sorry. I thought we had to. Check in.
Oh, welcome. Okay, so we'll, um, reconvene, open session. Are there any items to report?
Yes, mayor, just one item on item A two, the claim, um, by Ramon Montahano with a motion, uh, by, uh, council member Stowe, seconded by Vice Mayor Flores and a five zero vote. That claim was denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone who'd like to lead us in an invocation? If not, let us have a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, this brings us to oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not, unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comment?
Your honor, we did receive some email communications and we do have some participants in the attendee list that would like to speak. Um, not sure which one you would want to go with first.
Uh, please proceed with the participants that are in attendance and then we can, uh, proceed with the email after.
Okay, give me one moment, I'll go ahead and bring them in.
Welcome.
Is it my turn?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. I'm Virginia Garola with my address on file. I wish to thank the council for their efforts in assisting in obtaining funding for the homeless and remind the public of the city's efforts to support the homeless. As I remember, the council approved to provide lunches for the homeless at the onset of COVID and did so for many months. The funding and partnerships created for the navigation center, which provides wraparound service and dormitory housing for the homeless is an example of the foresight and efforts from the council and staff. The city of Porterville has become a leader in the development with the development of the navigation center. It's one of a kind in Tulare County, serving the homeless population. Turning point utilizing their experience and expertise are operating the navigation center while coordinating with many of the organizations in the community and county. The navigation center, per the reporter of December twenty twenty, had made more than five hundred individual personal contacts since its opening in August. In addition, council members attend council countless hours of meetings to collaborate on countywide homeless issues, especially Vice Mayor Martha Flores. So you can understand why it was completely taken back when I read the front page of the reporter on Tuesday, February twenty third, regarding the homeless issue. And to read, the council member Penalosa stated, quote, "The Porterville City Council has failed its homeless community and he hopes he can start a conversation about solutions for homeless among the council." I think you're a day late in that conversation. This isn't just a slap on the face of the city council, his colleagues, but the city staff who worked diligently to seek funding and attend meetings after meetings to promote the city of Porterville in assisting the homeless. I've said on more than one occasion, when I sat on city council as council members, if we are not at the table in state and county sessions, the city loses out on funding and other assistance. Councilmember Penalosa, you have a seat on Link Local Initiative Navigation Center Committee, a place that you could promote assistance for the homeless, a group where you can be at the table to use your voice to promote the homeless. And just recently, the Community Development Grant Committee agreed to set aside funds for the homeless. So I don't understand how the council has failed. In closing, I support assisting the homeless, but also support that people find ways to get back on their feet. The navigation center with its wraparound services is a way to assist the homeless, get back on their feet if they are willing. As a woman who'd been homeless in LA for quite some time told me, you have to take that helping hand to become self-sufficient. And she did with the grace of God, become self-efficient. I want to thank the council for the time in my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, your honor, I have, uh, next Brock Neely. Give me one moment to bring him in.
Evening, council. Brock Neely, address on record. A couple of points. Uh, one point is there is a superior, a Supreme Court case from nineteen eighty-one called Montana v. United States. In that court decision, the Supreme Court ruled that the public waterways going from high watermark to high watermark, bank to bank, in any waterway is public. So irregardless of what the sheriff says, that people's property line goes to the center of the river is incorrect. And that has been adjudicated by the Supreme Court. The other thing is on, uh, item twelve, uh, on the policy for the drones, I would like to see included in section six oh four point three privacy, that anytime anybody is inadvertently recorded and their private, their private privacy violated, that they be notified in writing. So that they know that their privacy has been violated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Yes, your honor, we have next, it just says Denise, no last name, give me one moment, I'll bring them in.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Denise Everhart. We spoke last week with the Barn Theater. Um, I just wanted to give you a brief update on our pop-up, uh, vendor event that we did on Saturday that you approved for us. This event was extremely successful. We were able to raise over eleven hundred dollars to put toward the barn theaters, uh, utilities and, uh, monthly bills. It was extremely successful. I had spoke to the Fire Marshal Clayton, um, regarding some clarification on some things that we had talked about last week. One of them was the spacing for the pop-ups. I followed his guidelines exactly. We had, uh, chalked off all around the perimeter, the spaces to make sure that we had exactly the correct spacing that the fire marshal and the code enforcement wanted us to have. Uh, all of the vendors, they had sanitizing wipes, hand sanitizer at their stations, every single one wore masks. We didn't have any real problems with anything. Um, everybody was willing to wear their masks to come out and look. We made sure there was social distancing. We had over, um, eighteen to twenty volunteers from the barn theater helping to make sure that all the COVID guidelines were being matched, that made sure that parking was running smoothly, that didn't have any bunching up of, um, any groups. Everything went really well. We, um, also had, uh, very respectful vendors who were very appreciative to the city for allowing them to come in. Um, also, all the food was, I wanted to secure that with you, that all the food was to go, that we did not have any seating available. Uh, it was a really good turnout. The, uh, vendors that we worked with were all very kind and just excited to be there and be able to make some money. And they, uh, would have also reached out to us, as I had mentioned before, about doing this on a monthly basis, following these same guidelines that were installed. Uh, we also, uh, made, you know, there were little tweaks that we had to do as far as, you know, what we're going to do for parking, uh, for the vendors, but everything really went well. And I just wanted to share that information with you. Uh, we do have, uh, thirty-eight dollars in vendor day permit fees to submit to the city. And unfortunately, our, uh, treasurer at the barn, her kids have had the flu and she has not been able to get in to make that. So I will personally come down and write a check to cover that. Usually it should have been in yesterday, but with her being ill, we just wanted to make sure that you knew that we were aware of that and we were definitely going to be paying that thirty-eight dollars. I'm also asking at this time that you consider allowing us to do this the last Saturday of every month. Um, if it's willing, you know, until COVID allow, or is a little bit more tame, that we are able to open our theater again. We had such a good turnout and it just really was a very beneficial, um, event for everybody that was involved from. Uh, I'm sorry, I was muted, but so anyway, I would just really like to say thank you for that and to also, uh, consider, for you to consider having, um, allowing us to have another event like this on March twenty seventh and I will be.
Okay. It appears that the comment has ended.
I'm sorry, I got cut off.
Okay, just, just briefly, as I, as, I'm not sure how many minute, how, how much time is left?
I, I, I summed up everything that I liked. I just basically wanted to ask the, the council again to consider allowing this event to happen again on March twenty seventh.
Okay, well, thi- this is public comment, so we're, we're just here to hear your comment. You, you can feel free to reach out to the, to the city with a question if you wish.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Your honor, we have one more in the attendee list that would like to speak.
Yes, please.
By the name of Jessica Brackean. I'm gonna go ahead and bring them in right now.
Hello, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you for having me. Um, my name is Jessica Brackean. I am the CEO and President of the Portable Chamber of Commerce. Um, I just wanted to share a quick update with all of you on projects I've been working on in the community, as well as ways that we're working to help to be a resource for businesses during this difficult time. Um, my staff and I have continued to help many businesses with information on COVID nineteen resources available. Um, we have helped businesses apply for many different grants. Um, more recently, one of the new grants that's available is the Taking Care of Business Fund. That grant is sponsored by Momentum Broadcasting and it's available to small businesses in Tulare County. Um, this grant is different because it's funded by donations of people and companies around the county in an effort to support our local businesses. So we just want to encourage businesses to give us a call at the chamber if anybody would like more information. Um, we recently also offered a question and answer session on the PPP program. Um, that was via Zoom and Facebook Live. We did that to help answer any questions that businesses might have, um, regarding the PPP, the new guidelines and as well as how to apply for that. Um, we also have assistant businesses by providing, um, this year we did complimentary labor law posters to all of our members. Um, we also have extra posters available in English and in Spanish if anybody still needs them. Um, we have, I have also continued to partner with our schools, um, by sitting on the P eight Coalition Board and helping to recruit uh, mentors and find placement for safe internships for students. Um, today I actually spent most of my morning doing mock interviews with high school students for the various pathways. I hope to help them gain valuable interviewing skills and provide them with feedback on their resumes. So they're confident and ready to join the workforce when that time comes. Um, I have also partnered with the county to get COVID nineteen vaccine information out to the community and all of our businesses. At this time, the chamber has been receiving anywhere between ten and fifteen calls a day regarding the COVID nineteen vaccine. Um, as well as testing information. as well as testing information. So we have made it a focus to make sure that we're getting that information out to the community as much as we can. And we just want to really help our businesses get back to business. So I just want to take that time and give everybody a little update on what we're working on. Thank you all for having me.
Great. Thank you for the update.
Of course, thank you.
Was that the last attendee comment?
Yes, Your Honor, if you would like, I can go ahead and read off the emails that we've received.
Yes, please do.
Okay, the first email is, actually, it's a two-part email. They submitted one a few days ago and then one today. I can go ahead and read that out now. This one is from Raymond Beltran. I timed myself, I'm sorry. "Can the council share what information they used in deciding to reopen the public playgrounds and allow outdoor dining in the city of Porterville on February fifth, twenty-twenty-one?" That was the first email, and then I received one today from the same individual. "Does the city council believe in the right of the citizens to have a peaceful protest in the city of Porterville, either on private property or public? And if not, what specific data is the council making this decision?" And again, that is from Raymond Beltran. The next email that we have received is from Jamie Beltran. "What current law or order is the council following to justify finding indoor dining and the right to assemble?" Jamie Parker. And the last one that we received was from today. This is from D.L. Worthington. "I would like to see the city crack down on illegal fireworks by patrolling and fines within the city limits. I agree the loud shrill fireworks need to be eliminated from the city. It affects pets and sensitive people adversely. I would like to see the city continue with the safe and sane sales we have enjoyed for years. Thank you." D.L. Worthington, two eighty-one South Argyle Place, Porterville. And that would be the last email communication that we received, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the public's comments. And now it's time in the agenda for the AB twelve thirty-four reports. This is the time for all AB twelve thirty-four reports required pursuant to Government Code five-three-two-three-two-point-three. And first, we have the Vice Mayor with a report for the California League of Cities Homeless Roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor. I was on for approximately thirty-five to forty minutes, and it was held on February the seventeenth. The subject matter was on housing. And again, I'm going to reiterate that the purpose of these roundtables is for the cities to address homelessness in the midst of this pandemic and how large and small cities statewide were working to assist those who were experiencing homelessness, but in particular to share ideas. And these discussions are participant-driven. What types of housing are available to our homeless population and what are the pros and cons of these options? What resources and tools have you found the most helpful when presenting these options to your community? These were the questions that were sent out prior to and would let you know what the basis of this roundtable was. What was beneficial was to hear what other cities were doing. And what works for one is not always a fit for another when we're talking about cities. Shared was a pallet project which was near Riverside. They were small mini homes that were created in less than twelve weeks. Tenant base, rental associations, and other partnerships worked very hard with the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief. The outcome were thirty pallets, mini homes with dual occupancy, fifty-six beds, and they probably see over a hundred people daily. Another city spoke of their navigation center and the steps that they took to get there. It's not at full capacity. They spoke of a program called Kahoots from Eugene, Oregon. It's on a social worker emphasis to assess issues with the homeless person. The transition from the shelter to permanent supportive housing spoke briefly on the mental health services at the shelter, which would be a bridge to permanent housing. In the Santa Rosa area, another person spoke of Kahoots. They purchased and set up pallets. Their information is on the website. They explained that they were on a methodical application process and that they were working to establish a rapport with the homeless to work with them when shelter becomes available. Hopefully, they would accept it because they find that a lot of them will not accept it. They have to also be drug-free and it's low barrier. They cannot have any violence. And they also need identification project, process. What they specified was that they were pursuing a methodical process in the intake and what they were doing. Bishop City Council, they spoke of a safe parking lot which was rejected by their Board of Supervisors. The reality was because of the statistics and the utilizing data, it was important for them to garner the support of the community and to create the story behind it. Here again, it pleased me to hear that they moved in the direction of a navigation center which garnered the support of their supervisor. These meetings will continue. I keep saying that. And even while I was there on the short time, the dialogue as to what other cities were doing is always beneficial to hear. I am proud that this city, through staff, supportive council was proactive to take the supportive measures to address homelessness in Porterville and the hours that staff put in to provide us with the information because we are the first into Tulare County with the navigation center, the welcome center, while others are barely beginning the process or have not started a process. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any questions, I'll proceed to the next report, which is the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board Meeting from the eighteenth of February. Four notable action items that meeting. The first was to extend an agreement to administer Carl Moyer Memorial Air Quality Standards attainment program funds on behalf of the Great Basin Unified Air Pollution Control District. This happens sometimes when a district is unable to find ways to expend the funds. In this case, most likely for large vehicles. And our district takes the funds because we sometimes don't have enough funds that are allocated to us to be able to do it, and it helps to achieve attainment. So this was a way to extend that agreement with the Great Basin Unified Air Pollution Control District. We also approved a voluntary emission reduction agreement, also known as AVARA, with the Friant Water Authority to mitigate air quality impacts in the soon-to-be-made improvements to the canal. This is a very large project and very important to our region, but also important to our region is air quality. So looking to mitigate any air quality negative air quality contributions through excessive trips or equipment. Are, those are mitigated through planning, the use of equipment and scheduling, ride-sharing, and other methods to decrease the amounts in fees that will be paid to have the project done. We also discussed, which I'll provide the council in your inboxes with the PM two-point-five presentation that we had at the meeting, I think it's probably the best summary of two-point-five, PM two-point-five pollution and the ozone standards, as well as the federal meeting, the federal attainment standards. So I'll make sure that you get a copy and for the public on the air districts meeting for the last, the last meeting in February. These presentations are also available to you. So just looking at over the PM two-point-five plan. And also, we authorized a contribution of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in funding to the Council of Fresno County Governments to support Phase Two inland port feasibility study. This is a way to try to gather and coordinate the movement of goods through the area by also being able to manage the air quality in doing it. These are, these are some of the steps being taken to try and eliminate some of the negative air quality that's generated through the vehicles that move goods through our areas. So always good to see steps in the right direction, especially feasibility studies, rather than just regulation happening right out front. So we look for possibilities there. And that concludes my report for that meeting. And unless there's any questions, we can move on to the next report, which is the United States Census Bureau twenty-twenty preview. And I believe Vice Mayor was going to report on this.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. The Census Partner Appreciation and Data Resource Preview was held on February the eighteenth. The emphasis was to express gratitude on behalf of the United States Census Bureau to all the partners covering the Sacramento and Greater North areas, the Greater Bay Area, the Central Valley, and the Central Coast. The overview was the partners in action. The regional highlights included the self-response rates, the non-dissential data resources, the data summit plans, and some announcements. The national response rate is sixty-seven point zero percent. The California self-response rate was, is at sixty-nine point six percent. I want to put an emphasis that self-response rates are based on internet, mail-in, and phone responses. The data does not include the non-response follow-up, door-to-door, and field operations. I will remain focused on the Central Valley and coast area because Tulare County is in this category. And I will only report out in two thousand and ten, the Tulare County response rate was sixty-five point zero percent. In two thousand and twenty, the response rate was sixty-five point four, the growth rate being eight point zero six. And also, this information can be found on the website. Now remember, this is information that is based on the internet, mail-in, and phone responses, and did not include the others. So there's more information that will be forthcoming. With regard to the non-dissential data resources, they spoke of the American Community Survey, the Economic Survey, Small Business, Demographic Survey, Household Poll Survey, and COVID-nineteen Hub, which can also be found at www.sensus.gov. I highlight that the ACS survey is an ongoing survey that provides vital information on a yearly basis about our nation and people. With over three-point-five million households, the ACA estimates are often used to help establish priorities and needs assessment to develop general plans, research, education, and advocacy work for agencies such as federal, tribal, state, and local agencies, non-governmental organizations, emergency planners, business, and educators. On the data summit plan, the Census Bureau submits the data starting in April of two thousand and twenty-one. They will be designed to increase awareness and accessing information about our community. The partnership specialists will be contacting partners to join the virtual data summits. So that information will be forthcoming. They spoke of the benefits of the summits with a highlight of an ambassador program, followed by many announcements. As many of you are aware, the city of Porterville established a local Porterville Complete Count Committee. And it was an honor and a privilege to work with a lot of the agencies that came to help and assist and alongside city staff. I know that Jenny Byers, who was here, put countless hours. I know that Jason Ridenour, Claudia Calderon, Mr. Lawless, they, I mean, if I left someone out, but they were, they were the steering committee and the force and the drive to make this happen for Porterville. And I just want to recognize them because of how important we were able to have this here in Porterville. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely a lot of hard work and a lot of thanks.
And if I may add, Your Honor, we did receive notification. I know that the Census prompts kind of redistricting, and as we've shared about looking at the council districts and redistricting information, they've indicated that that will be received in the September timeframe. So just to keep the council aware of that information, it is delayed, but we should have that information come September and be presenting further information to the council.
Okay, great. Look forward to it, I'm sure. All right, so the next report is the City Council Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee Meeting from February nineteenth. Councilmember Penalosa, did you want to give the report?
Yeah, I would, Mayor. I don't mind, and you can chime in if I miss anything, but I'll keep it very brief. We met together, staff and the mayor and myself, on February nineteen, twenty-twenty-one. We met with Culture Cannabis Club, and we reviewed negotiations with the development agreements with them. I really think that the negotiations are going pretty well and that we look forward to really just finalizing that very soon and bringing it, you know, having it be approved. And so, yeah, I think they're going, they're going really well. And I appreciate the staff work around it, as well as the mayor, who has led the conversations and has been leading it and facilitating it pretty well. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, great. Yes, and thank you for your participation as well. Councilmember Stone, did you have a question?
Yes, if you don't mind. Councilmember Penalosa, you said you're negotiating development agreements. What type, can you say, what type of development agreements you're negotiating with them? I don't know if that's, if you said online or not, or openly.
You want me to jump in? I think because they're not final yet, I think we're not getting into the details quite yet, but they will come to the council.
Okay, thank you.
And with the recommendations.
Right. And I think we, do we need to schedule a public hearing as part of those?
Yeah, it'll be, so the development agreements are actually approved by ordinance. So there will be an ordinance and public hearing associated with the approval. So not only will there be input from council, obviously, on the development agreement, but there'll also be input from the public.
So, yeah, but the progress, I guess, progress being made.
Thank you for the question. The next report is the City Council COVID-nineteen Ad Hoc Committee Meeting from February twenty-second. Councilmember Carrillo.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yes, so we met on this committee. It's myself, the mayor, and staff. And so we met on February twenty-second, and we had a couple of major couple of topics we discussed. The first one was a community civic event. That was the Barn Theater and their application. And there were several questions and some concerns that came up. So we talked back and forth and made the suggestion that we request a special meeting. And the outcome of that was the special meeting that we held on February twenty-fourth. So that was the first one. The second item that was a discussion point was the Coffee and Cars Event that was, I guess, advertised that it was going to be on that Saturday, the twenty-seventh. And so what we what we were notified about was a no trespass from the property owner, that the property owner did not want the event held there. So we wanted to make sure that the organizers got that information so that there wouldn't have to be code enforcement out there. Other than that, a lot of discussion was around some of the upcoming potential events. The Parks and Leisure Department presented some ideas. The Parks and Leisure Department presented some ideas on um springtime. Events that were gonna be held, mostly drive-through type events, and we had discussion on on those. Um activities, I didn't know if we wanted to go into detail on on any of those. But those, that's where they were presented to the committee.
All right, and I think, I think there there may have been one. Outdoor dining permit that we were discussing too, which is always good to mention because. That that as the weather becomes nice and businesses are looking to. To get back into the swing of things, that that's one of the few ways that they can, so always looking to. To take those applications, so hopefully if there's any more out there. They'll send them our way.
Thank you for adding that, Mayor.
And I think unless there's any questions. We can move on to the next report. Uh the Tulare County Association of Governments from February twenty second.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on Monday, February the twenty second, of course, virtual Zoom teleconference. And there were several items of emphasis which were pretty much just updates. And twice, I'll make a state statement here, twice during the uh meeting, I was booted off. So I'm going to report what I got and if Mr. Lawless. May have picked up something that I didn't, you know, at the end, he'll he can more than freely share, but as I said, here we go. Item of information for the Transportation Consent Calendar. Were as the Sustainable Community Strategy Regional Transportation Plan Roundtable. All I wanted to state on there were that there are still some vacancies to that committee. Moving into the transportation um part of the agenda, there were two action items. One was to approve the congestion mitigation and air quality projects and the adoption of resolution. It was a call for projects which was released in November of two thousand twenty for new C Mac projects and applications. Which were due in January two thousand twenty one. Recommended for current program with programming with regard to Porterville. Was the Butterfield, the project Butterfield Stage Corridor Bike Path. Federal C Mac dollars was four million thirty-two, three hundred and sixty, the local match would be seven million. Eight hundred and twenty-seven, five hundred and twenty-one. The total project cost would be eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine, eight hundred and eighty-one. And the other, oh, the Porterville Butterfield Stage Corridor Bike Path Project has been recommended for statewide. Active Transportation Program Funds. It was also recommended on the standby list for Porterville would be the purchase of three electric refuse trucks. And the approval of the final two thousand twenty-one Transportation Improvement Program. And corresponding air quality conforming analysis. On the Association Consent Calendar were the approval of the minutes for January the twenty-fifth for TCAG. And the minutes of January twenty-one for the Technical Advisory Committee Meeting. On the Association, there was only one item, it was to the adoption of the resolution. For the draft of the two two thousand twenty tribal tribal public participation plan. The recommendation was to take no action and to bring it back to the March meeting. I asked when the deadline for TCAG to receive the edited and the revisions, et cetera, would be. Would be to receive it before the me- um next meeting, and it was stated that March the fifth. Would be the latest to receive it for the March meeting. That's what I have, and I don't know if Mr. Lawless wanted to add to that because during the comment I got, as I said.
No, there, no, I think you did a great job summarizing.
Well, thank you so much, I was worried that I may have left something else, so the next meeting is scheduled for March the fifteenth. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. And unless there's any questions, I don't see. Any hands raised, uh can move on to the next item, which is the South County Tourism Mighty One Ninety Committee. Uh the meeting that was held on February twenty-fourth. Always good to to attend these meetings, um some of the items that were discussed and. Uh all, I I know that uh also Jason Ridenour and uh John Lawless were present. But I'll just go through and and if I miss anything, they can add to it, uh we we went over. The Mighty One Ninety website, which um uh is is looking very, very nice. And um is becoming more and more active with content. Um so it's nice to review that and we gave some suggestions as to uh what we might like to see going forward with that. The Mighty One Ninety Project Partner Update included Caltrans update. With the Mighty One Ninety, uh some information on markers, mile markers and some other. Items that will eventually come to come to be uh to help promote this corridor. Uh there was an update from Eric LaPrice with the US Forest Service and uh he gave us. Some information on on their activities, mostly um. With clearing some of the debris from the fires and how they're going about that and and a and a productive and also. A a way to kind of sustainably get rid of some of the the fallen trees and manage that process. Uh also, the the main action item of the meeting was to um. Renew the contract with Rethought Reborn Media, who has done uh most of the the branding. The website and social media for the effort of the Mighty One Ninety. Which has been um uh very well received, I think, through the community and our partners are still very happy with that, so. Mr. Right now or Mr. Lawless, if you have anything you wanted to add? No? Okay, great. And that concludes the reports, uh this time, uh we'll move forward to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine, will be enacted in one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made. In which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar, all items removed from the consent calendar for further further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. Counsel, what is your wish?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to pull item seven.
Okay.
And if there are no other conflicts or other items to be pulled. I make the recommendation that we accept items one through six, eight and nine.
Okay, so we have a a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Ca- ca- Councilmember Stowe, were you, were you speaking?
I would say, can we pull item twelve because of the comment of the public member, so we can just ask the chief regarding that?
Uh I think that's a scheduled matter, I think.
Oh, that is? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, I'm done, all right, I I s- I'm ready to vote.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um and that was uh pulling item seven. And approving the the rest, uh so we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Corilla?
Hi.
Councilmember Penyloza?
Hi.
Councilmember Stowe?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Hi.
Mayor Reyes?
Hi, S is five zero. Thank you, and now we will proceed to scheduled matters.
Your Honor, we now have six scheduled matters before the council this evening, the first is to consider the appointment to Library Facility Planning Committee. And Ms. Hillbrot will provide that.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, Mayor, members of council. At its meeting of December fifteenth, the city council took action to establish a library facility planning committee. And at that time, uh it was determined that it would be comprised of one city council member, one library and literacy committee member. Uh one friends and library member, two city staff members, which would be the Parks and Leisure Services Director. And city librarian and two members of the public. So staff did publicize those vacancies and uh is in receipt of three requests for appointment. One from Ms. Carol E. Brown, one from Ms. Natasha F. Seff. And the other from Mr. Felipe Martinez. And at this time, uh staffs uh is requesting that the city council consider the appointments to the library facility planning committee. And I would like to indicate that uh we are prepared to proceed with a a ballot system, if that is the council's uh direction. Uh so it uh we would do it via an email to um each of the council members. But they link to a survey that you would take and then we would share the results. If if that is your direction, it's similar to the McCracken method utilized when we're in the chambers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Stowe, did you have a question?
Yes, Your Honor, do we have anyone in the waiting room to uh that's, that maybe uh. An applicant that might wanna speak? On their behalf, on their own behalf, I'm not sure.
We have received a comment from Mr. Felipe Martinez and his comment is, I believe, the council. Cannot go wrong in selecting any two of the three who have applied to be on the committee.
Also, Your Honor, this is uh Fernando, um I will indicate that there are. I believe the attendees, um Natasha F. C. F. and Carol uh are in the attendee list.
Counsel, do we wanna uh allow them to? I I know when we're in person, it's customary to allow them to introduce themselves. Did we wanna go ahead and proceed with that?
Mayor?
Yes.
I I believe the courtesy should be extended.
Okay, please, uh clerk, if if you would admit.
Yes, I'll go ahead and admit Natasha F. C. F. at this moment.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Natasha Seiff and I'm currently the Technology Media Specialist at Manachi High School. I submitted an application for the Library Facility Planning Committee, the committee uh that you'll be voting on tonight. I've worked for a portable unified school district for the last sixteen years. The last seven as the Technology Media Specialist, where I have remodeled Granite Hills High School Library into a Twenty First Century Library and Media Center. Also at Granite, I helped design two steam labs, the ACE and Code Pathways. Along with designing for Twenty First Century Classrooms. I transferred to Manachi this whole year where I'm currently remodeling their library into a Twenty First Century Library and Media Center. I have also helped consulted for the Military Academy at Strathma High School on their remodels of their library. I'm interested in serving on the committee because I can help provide Twenty First Century Learning Strategies and Components to our city library. I'd be honored to bring my knowledge of technology and secondary education to support our community. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you for your application. Okay, and the next applicant?
Yes, Your Honor, the next applicant is Carol, there is no last name, but I'm gonna go ahead and assume that it is Carol Brown, I can go ahead and bring her in at the moment.
Please.
Good evening, council, this is Carol Brown. And I am retired from Porterville College after twenty-eight years. I was assistant to four of the presidents um when they were in office. And um I just have a love for our library and I saw your request in the newspaper and. The library has always been very dear to me, I homeschooled our children when they were young, the library was a huge facet in homeschooling with them. We went there several times a week for them to check out books and to participate. So my heart has always been with the library and now that I'm retired. I thought I would, I would volunteer my services if if you deemed it. Uh unless you, you know, you'd like to have me be a part of it.
Great, and and we certainly appreciate your application and appreciate you uh taking a moment to speak to us tonight.
You are very welcome, thank you.
Okay, council, uh how would you like to proceed? There, it's already been outlined uh that there could be the McCracken method, but um I think we're allowed. To do it in the manner of our choosing, is, are there any comments?
The American.
Yes, please.
I think that all three of them look like uh really good, solid candidates, to be honest with you, um. You know, uh I think it's definitely uh, you know, what I'm thinking is that we have. One person that has some background working with the college students and Porto College and. Uh we have a cur- two uh app, two of the other applicants uh who are um I know from my understanding. Uh Felipe Martinez uh is in the school board for P U S D. And then we have uh Natasha, who's also a a an administrative for the library, so. I would say, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea to choose one from uh P U S D as, you know, rep- you know, I guess not representing P U S D, but. Uh the the students and and that and that background uh in in the school district and then having. Uh maybe Carol um representing that kind of college background in her work there, so. Just some thoughts, I'm not sure, just wanna hear how the rest of the council thinks about it too.
Okay. And any uh Vice Mayor, I I see you unmuted, do you have a comment?
You're probably looking at my expression more than than muting, okay, first of all, I think all three candidates. Have something to bring to the table, that's very important. And of course, I always am an advocate for somebody that wants to come in and participate. And be very proactive, especially when we're talking about. The library, that is something that was important to us, I know that uh I that. I look at different factors and different components, I know that aside from Mr. Martinez being. A school board trustee, there is a strong financial background to the individual as well. Only because of the jobs that he has had out in the community and very proactive in involvement. Uh technology is important. I mean, it is a given and that is something that we have to look at. But we, I also have to embrace a member of the community. Who utilize the services and I know it's a difficult task. When we look at that there's two positions and we find that the three are fully acceptable. And I'm just gonna put this out because I don't know, I could be a standalone in this thought process. I know that we gave the direction to have this as seven members total. And it's very difficult because we don't always have volunteers that step up to the plate. But then that would have to be a reorganization of. A number for odd, we we need an odd number for their voting purposes. If we say, I think the three of them are acceptable and the number would have to change from seven. To an additional one, it would have to probably increase by another one. So I'm just talking and that's just my comment, I don't know if anyone else has anything to say. But again, they're all, three of them are very acceptable.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Corilla, did you have have any thoughts?
Um my only thoughts are the three applicants have very good um qualifications. I read through those um yesterday and today, and I think it made it a little more challenging, I feel like they do all bring. Really different but strong things that we're gonna need for for that, my. My thought about um there being two spots and three strong applicants is that. You know, sometimes when you have a committee or a a strong work group and somebody tends to um leave for whatever reason. Um or not continue to participate, then we lose that's that person and their history and time that they spent with us, so. I would always tend to go for if if we could. So I would always tend to go for if, if we could get three in there and I, I don't know how that would work, but I, I do like that idea also.
Okay, councilmember Stowe?
Yes, this is, uh, very difficult because I know personally, I think I knew all three applicants. But I do not agree that we put all three on because we will need odd number. We agreed to have seven. I think we should stay with seven. Uh, and let's just make the vote and see what we come up with.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would echo, um, the sentiment and let's just do this by the McCracken method and let's submit our tallies for two.
Okay. We, we can, we can proceed that way and I think the one thing that, um, that we do have in our favor is that we're the ones that set the numbers and, and should we find that, um, we need to add something later, we could. But if, if it's the council's wish to proceed with the McCracken method for the two, uh, which, which the item has been set for, um, I think we can go ahead and do that.
Okay, so am I hearing the direction is for the McCracken method? Okay, so I will initiate that email right now. Okay, I just sent it, so you should be receiving it. It's a, uh, it will ask you to identify yourself and then once you do that, it will take you to, uh, one question and you will have, uh, it's a multiple choice question. Who would you like to have on the committee? And you can select two of the names. And then submit your results and then I will receive them.
Do we go to that now?
Yes, you go to your, um, your city email or those that have additional emails. I've used both.
I don't know.
This is a pretty cool system. Thanks, Patrice.
I'm trying to refresh it, but I don't know, it's, it's not coming up on my end. Can you, is it possible to send it to the, another, another email or the one that's on file, the second one?
Yes.
Any chance, just because I'm refreshing it on my end, but not getting it through. I don't know why.
Mine hasn't come through either, so it might just be taking a minute.
Yeah.
Mine came through. I use my phone.
Councilmember, would you, um, I don't have your other email address if you want to text that to me or if you want to share it in the open meeting?
Yeah, I just, I think I just chatted it to you. Thank you.
Okay, I just forwarded the email.
Mine's not coming through on either. I have my personal and my, um, city. Know what's going on here.
Yeah, I, I got it on my end, um, already.
Oh, got it.
Okay, good.
Oh, that's fairly simple.
I'm showing three responses so far.
I think you should have mine.
Okay, I have all, all five, so now I am going to attempt to share my screen. Can everyone see that? So we have a tie for the second seat. So we could redo that and only vote for one?
Does this, just a question, Patrice, does it show, it, so we're supposed to show who voted for who on this?
It does, so, um, and I may need assistance with that.
It doesn't allow me to vote for one person, like to vote for two.
It may say two, but we vote one and submit it?
Patrice, are you on mute?
Mine's telling me to select more choices.
Yeah, we can do it. We can do it the old fashioned way. I can just take us, uh, uh, an open poll if you guys are comfortable doing that.
Yeah.
Okay, so eat, this time you guys are voting for one. Councilmember Penyloza.
I am voting for Felipe Martinez.
Uh, Councilmember Carrillo. Carol E. Brown. Um, Councilmember Stowe.
Ms. Brown.
Uh, Vice Mayor Flores. Felipe Martinez. And Mayor Reyes.
All right. Thank you.
I know. I see how you voted last time, so you have a year to make a decision.
Right. And I think the email was right that we, we can't go wrong with two, but I'm gonna choose, uh, Carol Brown.
Okay, so that, that would appoint, uh, Ms. Brown into that second seat. So with that, you guys can do a motion to, to, a formal motion to appoint Ms., sorry if I'm gonna mess up the last name, S. Seff and Ms. Brown to the committee.
Your Honor, I make that motion that we, um, appoint Ms. Seff and, uh, Ms. Brown to the library committee.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
I, Mayor, can I say something?
Please.
I just want, I just want to, um, acknowledge the, um, applicants. Um, they had really good qualifications, but I really appreciate, um, the two, um, being here and, and, um, addressing the council. That, um, really helped, uh, also.
Thank you. Yes, and I, I, I appreciate the, the applications. And it's not often that we, we get, um, more than, than the spaces we have to be filled. So I appreciate that and I, and I also appreciate all the qualifications of the applicants, so. With that, I think we can call for the vote.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Penyloza?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Reyes?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, and again, thanks to the applicants. And, and thanks to, uh, Pete McCracken for the, the method.
Which obviously has challenges in an electronic format.
Yes. Had I anticipated more than one round, I missed it by that much.
And it's okay, because as you can see, it came down to me, my, my two votes, so.
So, so all you really missed there was the ability to simultaneously vote so that poor, the mayor wouldn't end up in the hot seat like he was. So I, but that's okay. You guys got through it.
Okay, thank you. We can, we can proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, next item on the schedule matters, uh, of order would be, uh, fireworks ordinance update. And Chief Lapierre will provide this report.
Uh, Fire Marshal Digdon will be providing that report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Lawless, Ms. Lou and staff. In the weeks following the July Fourth holiday last year and as staff is currently working to prepare for safe and sane fireworks sales for the upcoming holiday, a series of three subject areas have been identified for consideration. One, the prohibition or limitation of certain fireworks. Number two, fines, and number three, enforcement efforts. This report is to provide information. Should the city council have an interest in modifying the city's regulations related to fireworks, such action should begin soon in order to be effective prior to the July twenty twenty-one holiday. Currently, the Porterville City Code permits for a brief period each year the possession and use of all safe and sane fireworks as approved by the California State Fire Marshal. These are sold by local nonprofit organizations through two distributors, TNT and Phantom Fireworks. Some residents have expressed concerns to the council about fireworks that emit noise, specifically requesting that such fireworks be banned from the city due to the impacts of noise on combat veterans and animals. Safe and sane fireworks do emit sounds and are approved by the state fire marshal. The majority of noise complaints seem to reference the loud booms and concussion felt by the use of illegal fireworks. The Piccolo Pete branded, uh, by TNT fireworks and the whistling Phantom from Phantom Fireworks are probably the loudest of the safe and sane fireworks approved in California. These particular fireworks can also be readily converted to an explosive device. For this reason, not noise but safety, these fireworks have been prohibited in other jurisdictions. Staff's research found no ordinances prohibiting fireworks based on noise alone. It should be noted that the vendors that sell safe and sane fireworks in the city of Porterville have offered to voluntarily remove the Piccolo Pete's or Whistling Phantoms within the city of Porterville. Please see the attached correspondence. Voluntary removal from local booths may reduce but not eliminate the issue as residents and their guests could purchase these devices outside Porterville and bring them into the city for use. Possession or use of illegal fireworks is strictly prohibited and the city's fine is currently fifteen hundred dollars for the first violation and any violations within one year at the same level. Often, a large group or block party will accept the risk of being caught and pool funds to pay the fine. This crowdfunding reduces the impact of the fine and minimizes its efficacy. Research throughout California found graduated fines generally range from a thousand to ten thousand dollars. Some ideas that are in place in other jurisdictions in California. A, fines could be increased up to ten thousand dollars. B, setting a graduating scale, for example, twenty-five hundred for the first, five thousand for the second and ten thousand for the, uh, third and consecutive for possession or discharge of illegal fireworks. Or one thousand, twenty-five hundred and find that five thousand for other or safe and sane violations. And finally, C, extending the time for repeat offenders up to thirty-six months instead of twelve months. Any increase in fines needs to be justified as to the impact on health and safety for the community. Information which could readily be prepared based on incidents and accidents related to fireworks in and around Porterville in the past. The city attorney's office has reviewed the legal restrictions concerning administrative fines and has found that while there is no bright line monetary limit, the amount of any fine must be reasonable and not excessive in light of the violation. Catching someone in violation of the code is increasingly difficult. And an increased fine does not necessarily mean that violators will be cited and fined. Historically, there are four teams of two comprised of code enforcement and police officers available for the fireworks enforcement detail on Independence Day. The very high number of people celebrating the holiday with illegal fireworks makes enforcement difficult and only moderately successful. The police department is proposing a drone program that could be included in illegal fireworks detail and could aid in the identification of the discharge location of the illegal fireworks. In an effort to coordinate a more effective response, the fire chief has been coordinating with the Tulare County Fire Chiefs Association to discuss the concept of a countywide illegal fireworks task force. Such a task force would coordinate law enforcement, code enforcement and fire department personnel throughout the county and could team up to focus on different locations with more pronounced enforcement, similar to law enforcement's click it or ticket campaigns. The group would also focus on education about the laws and fines associated with the possession or use of illegal fireworks. Chief Lapierre and Tulare County Fire Chief Norman have already presented this concept to, concept to the Tulare Kings County Fire Chiefs Association. The concept was broadly supported and that group requested coordination with the Tulare County Police Chiefs Association on the concept of a countywide task force. Additional tools that might aid in a more successful enforcement include, A, a program that offers a reward for individuals who advise the task force of a planned discharge of illegal fireworks or information that leads to an arrest for the sales of dangerous fireworks. And B, the establishment of a host ordinance, a concept that has been used in other communities that holds the property owner or lessy accountable for the discharge of illegal fireworks from their property regardless of who actually discharged the device. If either of these options are of interest to the council, additional information could be presented to the council. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for the report. Um, are there any questions? Councilmember Stowe, I see you've unmuted.
I did. Um, you had the, I think, the Crime Stoppers, um, which offers an award for the neighborhood. Would it have to be that night that they're, they said, or they would call it in the next day? Or, or at any time, like Crime Stoppers would, but you must have proof that, uh, whoever sets it off. So I assume it's gonna be that night that they would call it in. Is that correct? If, if I may, um, just jump in there, um, probably look to the city attorney for that. Um, to my understanding, they would have to have picture or some evidence that they did set off that firework. Um, we wouldn't be able to just possibly go on their word alone that, that they are reporting that.
I guess it would be, it would depend on the circumstances. If you get multiple reports, call-ins about an incident, a, an incident, then you almost have corroborating at least evidence to at least go investigate it, right? But, or if somebody has a, yeah, sends you a screenshot or a picture and says, hey, this is by me. I mean, there, there's different ways that that could, that could be happening, especially now, nowadays. Much easier to have instant, you know, at least photo evidence of something.
Or, or they call in, police goes stake it out and. Or, or if you have, like, they're selling illegal fireworks from a certain house or location and, uh,
Right.
they have probable cause and they go over there and they find a cache of them, then that person will receive a reward on it.
And I, I thought I saw the item, too, that there may have been, um, a prev- previous knowledge of, of them going to be set off at a certain, so maybe ahead of time if they knew that they were in existence. And then they reported it and it found to be true or, or accurate.
We, we would definitely, if, if the council so chose to go down that path, uh, work with the city attorney's office to set criteria so it be well drawn out and who would receive, uh, a benefit from reporting that in those circumstances.
Counsel, are there any other comments or, or questions?
Well, I think that would be one tool that would help prevent the illegal fireworks going off. Because there's more eyes around and, and if you think your neighbors might, um, call you in, you, you know, you probably won't be setting off many fireworks or illegal fireworks anyway.
Yeah, I, I agree that, uh, 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 Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Penyloza?
Oh, uh, yeah, uh, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Please.
Uh, so, yeah, I was just curious to know in terms of the, um, I know, I, I was, through the report, I stated about the, the hosting ordinance. When it comes down to holding the property owner accountable, um, i- i- how does that work necessarily? Uh, I'm just, uh, you know, what, what I'm thinking about is, I just, I just, I don't know, uh, if it would be fair in a way to, um, to hold a property owner accountable for, for someone that's renting their property, uh, necessarily, uh, since the property owner probably isn't aware of it. So I'm just curious to know how. Uh, since the property owner probably isn't aware of it, so I'm just curious to know how that works because. Would they get fined as well, even though they were unaware of it, or? I know there was some information towards the end of the report about it, but I was curious to know what additional information was found, uh, around that and how that would work.
Do you want to speak to it or do you want?
I can speak to, I actually have a client, a public client that has had this very, has, you know, is in the housing business and has had this happen. And so, you know, where we've been held accountable by another, by a city in the area. For a tenant doing that and our answer was that that tenant needs to be evicted and that's the point, I mean, it, it's a heavier hammer. Um, because you're right, I mean, it's not the property owner themselves setting it off, but they are responsible for illegal activity that goes on at their, on their premises. So, um, and that's often way, it's often more effective. You know, the penalties coming from the landlord in, in basically providing a disincentive to the behavior. Than, than any penalty we can assess on, on the tenant. So, um, and, and actually what we ended up doing in that circumstance too, is we were able to work with, with the, with the city. One, you know, once they were aware that we had evicted the tenant, so sometimes there's some relief given there if, if, if the property owner is able to take care of this, of the issue themselves, but. Um, and, and that's something, by the way, that's always gonna be something that the city attorney's office recommends here. Is that no matter what penalty structure or fine structure you guys set up. There would always be a provision as there should be, it's required by law to, to consider mitigating factors. It's not a strict liability issue if there are mitigating factors, they can be considered. So, um, but, but, but it, but part of the reason of doing this is when you, when you make the property owners responsible as well. That tends to send a, a stronger message because then the property owners can actually, you know, have better control over their, their tenants.
Okay, understood, yeah, yeah, that, that clarifies it, uh, on my end, so. Uh, so basically what we're saying is we would, uh, in, have an ordinance that states that if. Uh, a renter, for example, um, sets off an illegal firework. And they're caught that they're, that the. Homeowner, homeowner or the property owner, um, would then have to hold them accountable. Uh, and so then that basically works in the favor of the, the fact that if prior to Fourth of July, then the property owners would. Communicate with their, uh, renters to make sure that they're not doing this because it could lead to an eviction.
Right, and not only that, it, when, when you, we, we would always recommend that you cite both if you can, you cite the, the violator. And the property owner, so it's not, the property owner is not the only one getting, because I don't think that would necessarily be, I mean, it doesn't make, it's not necessarily fair. Now, it's who you, if you're not able to discern who actually set it off. But you know what property it came from, then a, a social hosting ordinance would give us the ability to cite the property owner in the absence of being able to cite anybody else. But we'd still have to be able to show it came, it came from that property.
And, and that happens in the field a lot, there's, uh, you know, we go out there and. It's, there's, there's fifty people there, you know, and, uh, no one wants to say they let it off, and so we're. Left with a crowd of people, then legal firework. And, uh, the absence of all that, we're kinda, it's hard to make that case, but with the host ordinance, that would be the case.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you.
Thank, thanks for the question, and I think, yeah, with, with leases, it's. They, the, the property owners already have a contractual agreement with. With the tenants and then also those parties, the parties that would happen. Um, if the property owner is present, they, it, I feel it may give them a little more voice and power and into, uh, determining. What happens if they're on their, on their property as well. Are there any more comments or questions?
Uh, yes, your honor, we gotta talk about fees or what type of fees we wanna go to or that we should, um. Put in place, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know if the chief has a recommendation or not, but. I would like the city attorney to weigh in on it, I know with the fees that we've had in the past, just looking at the report, we've had crowdfunding, you know, where. They all pitch in and, uh, pay for the fine, we've also had a low rate of collection as well. Um, so those are, those are, uh, issues that we have with it. Um, but, um, I don't have a, a direction of what that fee should be.
So, uh, and I know there's been quite a bit of information, I know that, uh, Clayton got quite a bit of, of sample, you know, examples of what other jurisdictions are doing. And, and my, my own recommendation, I mean, just my, this is, I mean, there is discretion here. Um, we do have to make sure that the, that the fine is reasonable in light of the violation and not excessive under the law and it's a factual. Sort of analysis that courts do if it gets to that point. Um, but one of the things that the court will look at is, well, what are other jurisdictions charging for this? So, so even though safety in numbers is not a normal advised defense. It can, as, as long as you have other factors as well, when you're making, you know, that you've made findings with regard to why you're assessing the fines you're assessing. Um, you can take that into consideration, so with that in mind, looking at what Clayton had found. I think that there are, there were several jurisdictions that for illegal fireworks use the twenty five hun- hundred, five thousand, ten thousand model. So I, I'd be, you know, I didn't see anything over that, and so I'd be inclined, you know, to recommend probably not going above that sort of structure. Um, and also I think that what I would also recommend is that you, you make those maximums, so it's a maximum of twenty five hundred, the first. Five thousand, the second and ten thousand, the third. Um, along with allowing, you know, for mitigating factors because the law basically says we do need to look at that, you shouldn't have these indiscriminate fines that you charge no matter what on. No matter the circumstances. So, under those rules, I think you guys could make findings and potentially justify. That, um, for these, for other types of violations, they tend to be a little bit lower when they're not involving the dangerous fireworks. Um, and so, and we did find that like a thousand to twenty five hundred, five thousand, that seemed to be a, a common one, there would sort of seem to be this dual structure in, in a few cities. But not every city is the same and they all, you know, quite a few of them treated differently. That was, those are just my thoughts.
And, and if I may, I, that, that, that is one of the considerations the council needs to give, because you do have, uh, uh. Consideration, it was a council's consideration, uh. To not allow for the sale of, of some legal. Safe and sane fireworks specifically the whistling, uh, ones. But is there gonna be a discharge consequence, so just the sale is, is. Does council want to entertain looking at language that would have a discharge penalty to it? Um, and, and it kinda gets to the second. Do you want it to be reflective of illegals or, uh, legal firework discharge or having a lesser? Lesser penalty or, or any penalty, penalty hall?
If we're gonna prohibit specific ones, I, I, I would always recommend to use sale, possession and use, so it's all, it's sort of all of the above, if you go that route.
Yeah, and it was my opinion that we were talking about sales and discharge.
Yeah.
And, and also the length, what a repeat offender would be, like the thirty six months. So like if we had an illegal firework shot off on, uh, this year.
Oh, within three years instead of a year, yeah, that's another option, absolutely.
Yeah, that, they would move to the, like their second offense would be five grand, it wouldn't be renewed for him every year, they'd have three years. That they could get caught up and, and moved up into the ten thousand dollar range.
Yep, that's something the council can sit, can. I don't know, Clayton, do you remember off the, uh, uh, off the top of your head with, with the information you found, if there was, if there were quite a few jurisdictions that had length in the time period? From one year to three years, so that if you, that way you could accumulate violate higher penalties for a longer period.
Yeah, that, there were a few that had done that and it was, and it makes sense because it's a single year that you have the holiday.
Right.
And so next year, we just keep giving them the same fine, it's, there's really no discouraging.
Yeah. I think it's a, it's, and, and I think we could make findings as to why, why you're doing that, to justify that. In, in a, in an ordinance.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm. So I'm hearing, I, I'm hearing the, uh. The post ordinance information requested the. Crime stopper type program instituted the. Recommendation of the up to numbers. For the illegal fireworks in the tiers that, that were outlined. And so then that, that leaves us with, is there another tier for the? Safe and sane and what, what is the numbers for that, or do those align with the others? Uh, cuz to me, it, it does. It will be hard that just outside this, the, the city, there will be these items for sale. That possession and discharge, discharge is, is more obvious, but the possession. Um, of that within the city limits, um, I think. We may wanna consider some discretion on, on how that fee or fine is, is done, but what the tiers of the safe and sane. Um, fines or fees will be, are, are there any thoughts on that?
Are you talking about just the two, the Piccolo Pete and the, the other that could be altered? Uh, I can't remember the name.
Phantom's version, I don't remember what they call it.
It's a whistling phantom. Okay. Is that the, uh, same fireworks you're talking about, your honor? So those, those both are safe and sane fireworks that in the report can, they can be converted to an, you know, explosive device. My thought on that, if we say they're not allowed in the city. They're now illegal fireworks, so they'd be the same fine as far as I'm concerned. Um, so I just think because, you know, we just got report from the chief that they can be altered. Into something explosive and, uh, I just don't think, if they're not safe, then they're not safe. If they're illegal, they're illegal. Now, as when drunk drivers, it doesn't matter if they're drinking hard liquor or beer, if they're insane or if they're drunk, it's illegal. There's, there's an educational component that's in the enforcement portion of it that, um. The task force will be looking into and blanketing, um, you know, for illegal fireworks. We would have to concentrate since we would be the only ones, I think, in the area banning those, that, that Piccolo Pete and the whistling phantom. You'll see them sold on our borders and it just. I, I anticipate, you know, people, uh, even with all the education you put out there. Possibly coming in with one of those, uh, you know, and. Being netted, if you will, or caught up in that, that fine like that. Um, just, I wanted to make counsel aware.
Any other thoughts, council members on, on that? I, I did, you know, since we did mention the up to fine that. Perhaps if, if we wanted to let the, the fire marshal and, and the chief come, come back with what the up to on that would be. Uh, whether it's quantity based, um, in possession or. Um, and, and as council member said, Councilmember Stowe said, if they discharge, then. There could be the, the basic fee for discharging an illegal firework, but as far as having them. Um, selling them, have there be some discretion with the up to portion, but having the. The fees aligned all the same with illegal fireworks, uh, being addressed on that same. Fees, fee schedule with the up to language. Any, anybody else have an opinion on that?
I'll just weigh in real quick, I, I actually like the, I mean, I think up to's. Language is good anyways, but it'll be particularly good if we're going to include the Piccolo Pete's in this category. Because my understanding is some of them may or may not be able to be converted, so if they couldn't, you know, so there may be. A little bit less justification there for being able to assess a higher fine, but if we're able to knock it down. Under those circumstances, so.
And, and they can only discharge safe and sane fireworks for a certain period like the twenty eighth through the Fourth of July, so. Where you'll see that other come in is they're doing safe and sane discharge outside of those parameters, which is against state law anyhow. But we would have our fines as well, uh, to tackle that and that would be a great tool to, to use. So, and, uh, Councilmember Stowe makes really good points with the Piccolo Pete's being able to be converted. So like if we found one that was converted possibly, that might be shove it into a different category, we're talking about mitigating factors opposed to just being in possession of.
Yeah.
Something we could look at and bring back.
Yeah, I think the, the details are gonna be where this is, this is all at. Um, the. Was this just an update or?
That's exactly what I was just gonna say, Mayor, so the purpose of today was just to, to, um. Stimulate the conversation about direction. As a draft ordinance is presented to you, we're working back, wanting to have something in place come the first of June. Which would have a, um, which to achieve that would wanna be having second reading of the ordinance, the second meeting of April. Um, because of thirty day, thirty day effective date afterwards, so we wanted this to be effective the, uh, first of June. Um, so we wanted to be able to get some, get some direction. For the crafting of a draft ordinance that would be not necessarily for your first reading before you at your next meeting, but. You know, does this capture the discussion from this evening? And targeting the first meeting of April for first reading of the draft ordinance with second reading, the second meeting of April, so it'd be effective by the first of June.
Okay. And I, I think you, you've received probably enough direction unless, uh, other council members, if you have one last shot at. Direction, but I think we've, uh, given some pretty good direction.
We can highlight the areas too, where we want you to focus if, if we're, if, you know, where we think there's still need, where decisions are clearly, I mean, obviously you'll have that ability on any of it, but we can. Highlight areas, for instance, sale, use, possession, sale or discharge, what do you wanna do here, those kinds of questions, we can get. Knock out that stuff in, through a draft, your guys' review of a draft ordinance at the next meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Stowe?
Thank you, your honor, I just like to make one more comment, I wanna thank, um, Mr. Dingham and the, and the chief for this report is very insightful, very informational. He did a very good job of bringing this to us and I appreciate it.
I agree, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Very good, so we'll have, uh, some, just some, uh, we will have the first draft, I guess you would say, not necessarily for first reading. Uh, but the first draft of a modified ordinance before you. Based on this direction.
Okay.
And in our follow-up meeting as well, the, the meeting with myself, uh, Chief Norman from the county and the police officers association for Tulare County. Will have met at that point and will have something from that meeting as well on the enforcement piece for the task force. On how much we're gonna be able to do this year and what that looks like.
Great, thank you. Okay. So we can proceed to item twelve.
Thank your honor, uh, next item in order is to consideration of implementation of an unmanned aerial system program and with that. Chief Quota will provide the staff.
Got it, now, now can I pull the item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. Uh, the Porterville Police Department has been in the process of developing an unmanned aerial system actually for several years. Um, it's been slow going, we've just been, uh, doing periodic research, um, we've taken, uh, different related research. Uh, which including contacting, uh, Mr. Mark Hall of All Drone Solutions in Exeter. Um, Mr. Hall is the leading provider and trainer for, uh, these air, unmanned aerial system programs in Tulare County. And he's been doing it for, uh, over twenty years. Um, along with him, another research has shown that unmanned aerial systems, which I'll call UASs. Are often utilized to augment a variety of law enforcement functions while enhancing our ability to provide public safety. And helping to mitigate certain officer's safety hazards while performing those functions. This is due to the ability of UASs to increase operational efficiency. In a very wide range of functions and it's enhanced by their ability to be very portable and their ability to rapidly deploy from, uh, vehicles. While UASs are commonly utilized for law enforcement activity, they're personally also allows for the use of. Uh, a lot of different city related functions as well. These functions as click can help mitigate potential hazards for other city staff. Almost every city department, uh, we, in the city of Porterville could potentially benefit from a UAS program. Uh, potential deployment reasons that, uh, we, that, uh, we think might become possible for a UAS. Is surveying scenes during natural and man-made disasters. Monitoring large crowds, events and other illegal activity. Searching large area for missing children and dangerous persons. Mapping, site surveys, periodic assessment of critical infrastructure. Site assessment and intelligence gathering to assist in deployment decisions for large structure or open land fire incidents. Checking structural integrity of buildings, other infrastructure after significant events such as earthquakes. And then, um, even as. And then um even as for tactical operations for law enforcement. Currently, several law enforcement agencies within California are, I'm sorry, within Tulare County have already implemented a UAS program. Um we have had one of our department command staff members attend both their trainings and demonstrations of their programs. A variety of models have been explored and DJI, the model DJI was highly recommended. It's what's used throughout our county. The DJI, the DJI models have a lot of adaptability depending on what environment it it need, it is needed in. It includes interchangeable attachments and thermal im- imagery for use at night. Um in addition, DJI has a mini UAS, um often referred to as a tactical UAS. Um and that's just based on its small size and portability that can actually be used inside of buildings, uh both for tactical operations or even fire assessments in larger buildings um without having to go inside. Uh the depart- the department currently has through our policy provider Lexi Paul, a legal compliant policy on UAS operations. It is provided as a testament and has been posted on our website as part of our poll, over policies on our website. Um we'll also be developing an operation protocol guide with deployment guidelines that talks about when you can use them, how to use them. Um that supports our legal policy. Additionally, the officer also currently, I'm sorry, the department also currently employs an officer who is a part one oh seven certified operator. He gained his certification prior to laterally transferring to our department. Additional personnel in our department will be designated to become a certified operator and will take that one oh seven certification, which is basically the pilot's license, what they call pilot's license. Um additionally, this department's intent to obtain a certificate of waiver authorization, what they call a COA. COA might be going away, but what COA does, it um relaxes the responsibility for law enforcement. I shouldn't say the responsibility. It let relaxes the restrictions for law enforcement and allows us to fly in certain areas where uh the normal public may not be able to fly. Based on the above, it is requested that the city council up consider authorizing the police department to implement the unmanned aerial system program. And again, this would be available for deployment for all city departments uh based on our research. Um and in conjunction with the development of our deployment guidelines that we've already been looking at, is requested the council authorize department staff to enter into agreement with all drone solutions for the purchase of five drones to include two day operation drones. Uh these are drones that just have a high resolution camera. Uh two night operation drones, these drones would include a forward looking infrared device uh to be able to look for heat signatures at night. You can't uh obviously don't have the light to see. And then one tactical operation drone, and again tactical operation, um doesn't mean it's always for law enforcement purposes. Um it's for use basically inside buildings with if needed. We did only obtain one quote. Um we believe that all drone solutions who we obtained a quote from is a sole served provider. All Drone Solution has equipped and trained fifteen different local police and fire departments in Tulare County, Fresno County. And he also uh outfits the Los Angeles Police Department SWAT unit. Um using all drone solutions, uh for more seamless mutual operations and training. As we would be, he does training in Tulare County. We would be able to attend those trainings with our allied agencies in this county. Um he's also available twenty four seven with any tactical um or any operational information that you may need, any problems that you arise. If the also in the event that the drone is in need of repair, we don't have to send it off. We can drive it over and you can repair it right away. Uh shaving on shipping costs and turnaround time. Also, the department research has shown that um um DJI is the preferred law enforcement model. Uh for a lot of law enforcement agencies, that's what they use as a be DJI model. All Drone Solutions is the only lock locally authorized DJI distributor or repair facility. So based on all that, uh we are requesting that the city council authorize the police department to implement an unmanned aerial system program and authorize the purchase of five drones from All Drone Solutions in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred forty dollars seventy seven cents, which is just two years ago, uh these amount of drones would probably cost forty thousand dollars. They've come down and improved so much. Um and so with that, um I'm open for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report, Chief. Uh any questions from council? Councilmember Stowe?
I was trying to give somebody else a chance, but this type of uh I think this is an outstanding uh opportunity for us and it brings safety to our police officers. You know, keeps them out of harm's way of going in someplace that's dark with a uh suspect or anything. And and it's easy, you know, just as we have more eyes in the skies now, even for the fourth of July for the fireworks and so. I think uh I've always supported the police department, especially when it comes down to their safety. Our guys, we want them to come home safe as well as our fire depart- department. And I think this is one of the new technologies that will help. And the only question I have is Chief Chief can address, we had a citizen talk about, you know, the privacy of a private, you know, of a private property. Um is there an exemption for the police department for this or is there, does he have? I don't know.
No, sir. It's 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 very well established. Uh Councilmember Stowe, um the drones don't give us any right to be somewhere that a police officer's body can't be. Um we can't fly people's backyard um unless we have probable cause to be in that backyard physically. Um we can't, we can't use the drone for any type of purposes that we would normally not have a reason to do. Uh probable cause um uh for certain areas. Um obviously, public areas are open, but um it doesn't give us any extra rights. It 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 certainly does not. And I understand the the privacy concerns and and that's all part of the training. Uh you know, uh when we're, when we get to an area where there might be those those sorts of situations, they train on how to turn the drones away from it, to turn the cameras away from it, to try to avoid picking up on certain things. Um so we're we're very aware of the privacy concern citizens are voted and will be very thankful and will be within the law on that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, Councilmember Carrillo.
Um Chief, I just wanted to thank you for this report and update. I wanted to say, um you know, you gave some really good examples here in the types of incidents that this would assist in. I I feel very comfortable with that and actually um would look forward to it. I I did have questions about training and the vendor, um and the vendor being a so sole source. I I could see why. Um and I think you addressed all the training and the policy and procedure concerns or questions um that would be brought up. So I just wanna, and I feel like that cost is is good for um that amount of equipment.
It it's very good. Um and uh you know, I've already had conversations with uh Mr. Michael Knight um and with Fire Chief LaPierre uh regarding uh the deployment of these. Um you know, we are, uh Mr. Knight already uses drones sometimes for inspections. Um it's not just safety for us and for fire, but even for his personnel, they can get to places where uh um they uh he's gonna have access. We we even offered a uh a pilot spot uh to him or a member his staff, uh so they can use this home. I mean, they're not, they'll belong to the city. They'll be operated out of the police department, but they will belong to the city. Um Parks and Leisure could use them to uh survey uh events, you know, public events if they wanna get some good pictures or something like that. Open to the whole city where we, it's not gonna be our ball, our jack still, we're going to share.
Thank you.
Ca- Councilmember Pinaloza?
I think the Vice Mayor ha- had hers uh first.
Okay. Sure, Vice Mayor?
That's okay. First of all, I want to express gratitude to the clarification of the privacy because I know that that is important to a lot of members of this community. I think this is wonderful because I know that there have been discussions in the past uh to this regard about how can we have this available in our city? And while you see um that the county, they have theirs and you know having to borrow maybe one or for certain things, but to be able to have what you call something for all members of the community makes it wonderful. So no, you answered a lot of the questions as others were asking. And it would be something I would definitely support.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pinaloza?
Mayor, uh yeah, I know. Thank you, uh Chief Proto, for the comprehensive report on 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 the drones. Um yeah, I think there's definitely so much good uh that we can utilize this uh these drones for uh in the community. And uh you know, technology is is uh uh u- utilizing in ways that will benefit the the public safety uh and go beyond just the public safety aspect, like you're saying, you know, that these these drones can can be used in many different ways uh to uh to help us, whether it's through events, taking pictures. But more than anything, I think uh just looking at the bullet points or or the points that of all the benefits, it just seems right. So um appreciate you bringing it to attention to our attention and also uh glad to find someone local that we can support in the process.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, and I I just wanted to add that, you know, uh flight and pilot safety with planes and helicopters is is a is a major concern. I know locally we've had um an accident, um I think through the sheriff's department, which um these, these devices, not only are they safer for human pilots and and uh helicopter operators uh to operate locally, but they're more environmentally sustainable to operate on a more frequent basis. And I think that there this technology is already being utilized by our department. It's just not always accessible in a timely fashion to be able to reap the benefits that that it could offer, let alone the other things listed, as Councilmember Pinaloza suggested, that that list of uses for other departments is um quite impressive. So um
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one more thing, it 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 reminded me of a conversation I had and I I apologize I didn't cover it. Um uh sometimes the question is asked, and I just wanna make it very clear to the public, you know, along with the privacy things. Um a a question that has been asked and and I've heard it been asked before, uh these will, these drones under, uh I don't know, do not have any type of weaponry or I know people get confused sometimes and when they think law enforcement and drones, there's no weaponry of any time on on these drones. It's 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 merely the the camera system.
Not a military drone.
Yeah, I know. Not a, not those types of drones.
Thank you for clarifying that. Council, do you? Do we have a?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we uh we purchase the drones for the, well, for the city and uh and authorize the purchase from the All Drone Solutions in Exeter. For the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred forty dollars and seventy seven cents.
Councilmember, does that include the implementation of the unmanned aerial system program?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Unless there's any more discussion, we can call for the vote.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Pinaloza? Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Reyes?
Aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And and when uh when we have these up and going though, we look forward to putting out the offer to attend one of our uh training sessions to anybody that would like to see them, how they work.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I I promised those uh in this meeting that I would uh have a short break at eight thirty. And I know we're we're almost done, but I said that last time and and we went another two hours. So if 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 you'll uh allow me to call for a a brief recess, I think is ten minutes too long? Five, five minutes?
Yeah, let's get it rolling, man. Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, a five minute recess and then we'll return.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This entitlement provides the city with an annual direct grant to provide decent, affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities primarily for low to moderate income persons. In two thousand and one, the city received a section one oh eight loan to construct the Heritage Center. A section one oh eight loan is in advance on future allocations. It is often issued to complete a large project. The city is currently in negotiations with the sale of the Heritage Center, which was publicly noticed on August eighth, twenty twenty. After writing the staff report, staff received an updated appraisal, which, which noted a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in the market value of the Heritage Center from one point six five million to one point eight million. The sale of the Heritage Center is expected to generate approximately nine hundred and seventy eight thou- nine hundred and seventy eight thousand in CDBG program income or P I. Um, that is the amount that we would have after we paid off the section one oh eight loan. Additionally, it'll make available future annual entitlement that was previously planned to be used for repayment of the section one oh eight loan principal and interest through fiscal year twenty twenty three. The section one oh eight payment for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty program year will be two, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The P I combined with section one oh eight loan and payment funds create a situation where approximately one point two, one point two six eight million dollars of C B G funds are available for our project. Good, good problem to have. The funds need to be, need to continue to be used on programs that meet the C D B G national objectives and also are used in an approved census tract, which included thirty eight point oh two, forty one point oh one, forty one point oh two, and thirty nine point oh one for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty program year to remain compliant with C D B G regulations. In addition to the regulations on what the funds can be used for and where they can be used, the city must also exercise timely performance and the expenditure of the funds. In accordance with C D B G regulations, twenty four C F R five seventy dot nine oh two, the city must have a balance no greater than one and a half times its annual grant that's remaining in this line of credit sixty days prior to the end of the program year. To, in order to meet this performance measure, the city is required to expend and draw funds within their, we call it I D I S. It's the Integrated Dispersment Information System. It's the, it's the reporting system for, for C D B G. Prior to April thirtieth of each year, so they can be measured by HUD on May second of each year. The P I entitlement previously allocated for repayment of the section one oh eight loan must be expended and drawn within that, in the I D I S system by April thirtieth, twenty twenty two, to meet this performance measure for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. In accor- in accordance with the current citizen participation plan approved by HUD, the city must complete a substantial amendment when more than twenty five percent of its annual allocation is changed or a new program is added. This expected P I triggers the requirement and also triggers the citizen participation and outreach. In order to use the expected P I funds generated from the sale of the Heritage Center and the funds that have been planned for repayment of the section one oh eight loan, the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two action plan and the twenty twenty consolidated plan previously approved by the city council at this meeting on April twenty first, twenty twenty needs to be amended. Community outreach for the substantial amendment for the twenty twenty consolidated plan, meeting, as well as the first public hearing with the Citizens Advisory and Housing Opportunity Committee, um, took place in February of twenty twenty one, so just last month. Homeless will receive the support of the use of the proceeds of the sale of the Heritage Center to be reinvested in youth programs, as well as for staff to continue to look for funding for homeless services. Staff is seeking direction on the use of P I in the council to assist in the development of the substantial amendment that will be considered by the council at its meeting on April twentieth, twenty twenty one during a public hearing. In response to public comment received for the use of P I funds to be used for youth in the community, staff researched projects that could be executed in the given timeframe and meet the national objective which is required by HUD. There was interest in expanding opportunities for extracurricular activities for the youth. Soccer fields were among the mentioned needs. Staff explored available city-owned properties that might be feasible for such a project. The city owns a pro- uh, uh, a parcel that's approximately eleven point six acres that is undeveloped and it's in an eligible census tract and is located just to the north of the Heritage Center and was previously planned for athletic fields, which can be utilized for the development of lighted arena soccer and multi-use fields. The estimated cost of the project is one point five million dollars, which would include four artificial turf lighted soccer fields, fifty feet by eighty feet each, and one all-weather surface multi-use court, which would be sixty feet by a hundred feet with a shade covered. One concept that is being explored is for the multi-use court to be reserved for the youth center students after school during normal youth center hours of operation. Mr. Moore is on the call and he is available to answer questions as we wrap this up as well. Um, but I would mention some of the site amenities would include restroom, concession, storage building, uh, spectator viewing and school boards. An estimated timeframe for this such a, a turnkey project would be for design to take place in July and August, site preparation in August and September. Production of, of the all-inclusive, uh, turnkey operation would take place in August and October, with delivery being in November, installation taking place at the end of the year in December, and then a, a check-in in February. The project would be turned into a multi-phase, the project could be turned into a multi-phase project spanning over several years by potentially adding future C D B G entitlement funds and other funding sources that can be leveraged, such as Measure R funds. Some examples of future site amenities could include uh, bike pedestrian, uh, trail or track around the perimeter of the area, additional arenas, uh, a team warm-up area and a fitness challenge course. In addition to the P I conversation, staff is also seeking direction on the reallocation of the funds for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one youth center program in the amount of approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which will need to be expended by June thirtieth of this year. Due to the governor's executive order N dash twenty nine dash twenty, school closures and social distancing measures in response to coronavirus pandemic prevented this activity from taking place. The twenty twenty, twenty twenty one action plan included a contingency language, which directed unexpended funds in this category at the end of the term to be added to the first-time homebuyer program. However, oftentimes this number is much smaller for these contingencies. This amount is much larger than the typical remaining funds. They can be moved with a contingency clause. Therefore, staff included this item in a substantial amendment to give the community and the council an opportunity to provide input and direction. Due to the limited time remaining to expend funds, staff recommends that the funds be reallocated to revolving account such as business assistance, including programs funded by C D B G C V or the first-time homebuyer programs. These revolving accounts will not require that those funds be fully expended by June of this year. Staff is seeking council's direction on the use of these funds created by the sale to the Heritage Center, as well as the reallocation of funds previously allocated for youth center operations. Council's direction during this public meeting will guide staff in preparing the draft action plan and consolidated plan amendments by determining which eligible programs, um, projects, programs and activities will best serve the needs of our community. Based on council's direction and other outreach efforts mentioned previously, staff will prepare a substantial amendment and on March nineteenth, we will open a third-day public review period and comment period for a public hearing to take place on April twenty. Staff's recommendation is the city council provide direction on the use of C D B G program income derived from the sale of the Heritage Center in repayment of the section one oh eight loan. Also in providing direction in the eligible C B G funds that would have been utilized for the section one oh eight payment included, uh, in such project. In addition to providing direction on the reallocation of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one youth center program funds. Staff's available for questions. I know Mr. Moore is available for questions regarding the specifics of, um, the project as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the report. So counsel, um, it's not every day we have a, an item like this cross our agenda. Are there any comments that, that you have? Or questions for the staff?
Um, may I speak?
Sure, uh, councilmember Penylosa.
All right, thank you. Um, I would say that, uh, I, I, looking at just the, the portion of the Heritage Center, uh, sale, i- i- the time, the timeline that needs, that exists, I think, just, um, makes it a little difficult to really think through of, um, you know, long-term projects that we can put that money because we have a deadline of when we can spend them, right? So, um, I do appreciate the recommendations that, um, have been given for, for the, the fields and, uh, and, and investing back into the youth and, and I appreciate the, the, them, uh, you know, staff providing, um, that they did survey and they got, they, or they did the meetings and provided feed, got feedback from the community stating that this is where the money should go. Um, you know, I, I, I think that one of the questions that I had in terms of the fields and, and, and the multi-purpose, uh, one as well, um, are the soccer fields gonna be exclusively soccer fields or, uh, i- i- is it, is it, um, i- are they gonna be able to be converted into a different purpose as well? I'm just curious to know about that.
That's a good question. Uh, the soccer fields could either be artificial turf or a multi-use, um, surface. And whichever one, um, they are, they could be multi-use. So, uh, even to the extreme of doing, say, like a senior citizen aerobics class in the morning. Um, so it doesn't even have to be your traditional sports, um, but they definitely are, uh, multi-use, uh, either with the artificial turf or the all-surface, uh, flooring.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Yeah, because I, I, I know that, um, if we can get, get it to be a multi-purpose use as well, i- i- I think it would be beneficial for, for us to think about that. Uh, but yeah, that's pretty much it, uh, on my end. Thank you.
I, I, as a follow-up question, just to Donnie, I, i- i- how, how easy is it to interchange the surfaces from turf to to the multi, multi-service?
Oh, they wouldn't be interchanged. I'm sorry, like, once we pick, yeah, once we pick an arena surface, it would stay that surface. But, um, but we've talked about both surfaces and so you could do a mix of, you know, two artificial turf and two multi-use or three multi-use, uh, but yeah, once the arena goes in with the one surface, it would stay that surface. But they definitely can be striped for multiple sports, especially the, uh, multi-use surfacing. You could put, uh, basketball, um, lines, volleyball lines, pickleball, uh, multi- multiple sports you could do.
Good. That's the comment I was gonna make. The large soccer field, what surface is that gonna be? Is it gonna be artificial grass as well or?
Well, this is just one concept we put before you tonight, uh, but the, the ones that we, uh, put before you, the sixty feet by one hundred feet is a large arena and that was going to be the multi-use, um, surface. And that could also, uh, make it a little more flexible for if the youth center was going to have access to it after school. Uh, then they could do, um, multiple sports or they could even bring in like a table and do arts and crafts on it or, or whatever. There's, there's tons of different opportunities for that, but, um, in what we presented to you, the largest arena was going to be the multi-use and the other four were gonna be the artificial turf.
I like the idea of having multi-use. I mean, we can put, I think, goals as we did at Zalit Park on the outside of fences and, and paint and put a pickleball court in with, um, with the pre-drill holes for the netting. Because a lot of seniors are now starting to play pickleball and they, and that game is picking up, you know, around here in the, in the valley. I like that concept, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, if you can see, are you able to see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, um, so that, that's just, there's just a couple of quick slides here just to review, um. This would be the two artificial turf fields, uh, and this is more of your multi-use, um, surface, which, uh, the way they designed that, it actually, even if it rains, it's supposed to not get slick. So, um, this company that we've been talking to is really, um, to the forefront of engineering as far as our artificial turf goes, not making it as hot as, um, what you traditionally hear for artificial turf. And then, uh, this is a new engineered, uh, multi-use surfacing that, um, isn't supposed to be as slick even in the rain. So, but you can see the different striping on this court. You can see the basketball court. Uh, but this actually could also be used for arena soccer and, uh, a bunch of other things. So, um, and then this just shows you an example that they do come with LED lighting. Uh, and so that's part of the package that you purchased. So that just shows you the lighting. Um, where we would propose these at the Heritage Center, if that was a site chosen, um, there is, uh, the parking lot there that was constructed initially for, um, some athletic-type fields that Mr. Right now referred to. And then this is just the overhead view of the, uh, Heritage Center site and that's just gives you a rough idea of the amount of space that it would take for those five fields. Um, and then all the extra potential for expansion, uh, that you could do, you know, a lot of different things with, um, as you, you know, get more funding. And the, the other really unique thing about this site is the, um, opportunity for, um, using multiple, uh, funding sources with the trail that Mr. Lawless has referred to in the past, being in proximity, um, just opens up a lot of different opportunities. So, um, just another unique, um, thing about the site. So, and this, this last, this is the last slide, I'm sorry, um, just the, uh, also it just shows that it can be done in six to eight months, um, completely ready to open for the public. This just has an example of, uh, the field on the left has the big bleachers there. So, um, if, if you put a, a complex in like this, I, I don't know of another one in the valley to be so unique. So the potential is there if the city really wanted to host tournaments, um, down the road. I mean, the, this, this would be so popular. And to potentially have maybe one field like your showcase championship-type field is what they did with this site here. Um, and another thing that you can see, um, there's a few logos around midfield and so all these walls around all these arenas, if you wanted to, they're a hundred percent brandable. So, um, some places have been using it, um, not only as a revenue generator to bring in tournaments and leagues all the time, but also if you really wanted to sell sponsorships on your walls, you could do that as well. So, just the potential for that.
And we have enough money to do all this.
Thanks.
The estimated cost, um, is one point five million dollars, um, as, as noted in, um, it looks like we're gonna have on just the, um, program income and the funds that were been prior allocated for, um, the section one oh eight repayment. Uh, we have a little over a million and a quarter. But with saying that, there But with saying that, there is um, there's additional funds that, that we, that we have that we can look for as we go to adopt. The, the action plan for next year. That um essentially, one of the things that we typically allocate about a hundred thousand dollars to parks. For parks improvement, this would be considered a park improvement, so those funds could go there. We have recently also began um a program of curb gutter and sidewalk improvement. We have previously allocated a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to, to that program, so those funds could be allocated. Those are kind of funds that um, I would say uh are, are flexible in that they can be, they're not a, they're not an active program such as. Uh, the operational program that is needed, funds needed to remain operational. As well as we were notified today of our new funding level, which was um, looks to be a little around twenty thousand dollars more than it was prior. So, long-winded answer to um, uh, council member, I, I believe we can find the funds. Um, and there are also, we can leverage funds as well for other funding sources, but I, I believe we'll be able to pull together the money to make it happen.
I'm gonna ask my last question, I think. Now, the remaining par- property, the portion of that's for a baseball field? Just asking. I mean, we made the promise. As the city.
That's the, that's the direction of the council.
But we do have enough property there for a baseball field, right?
I, I, yeah, I, I don't know, I've not specked it out, Donnie, or, but.
Haven't either. Uh, that'd be about, I think it's four hundred feet by four hundred feet or so. I'm talking about three acres roughly is a projection for a baseball field. Um, I think Mr. Right Now said about eleven and a half acres at that site. Uh, so, um, I haven't been with an architect yet as far as the layout of that potential uh multi-use there, multi-sport. We can sure look into it.
Then as. And something you may wanna consider, I've seen this another uh, 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 when I was in Washington DC. I saw a multi-use field, which was a soccer field and a baseball field overlaid one another with, with striping. Um, um. The, the, the only downside, unless you wanna do what Oakland did, where uh you have baseball and football that play and then. Um, I mean, it can, it can work, it uh, but the fields I saw in DC didn't have any dirt to them. They were just marked as baseball, but you can do, I, I mean, at the professional level, they.
Yeah, but you need to have someone to take care of the grounds and they have someone to take care of the, the grounds and the infield, you know, but that'd be awfully hard to, to do, so.
Well, that, that, that's why I was, what I have seen and I saw it in Washington DC was an overlaid baseball field over a soccer field on artificial turf. It just didn't have the dirt, uh, the dirt infield to it.
Then, we've had um essentially, as I noted in the, the report, three years remaining on our section one oh eight loan. And so um, we would have those payments, we're looking roughly in the mid-two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar range. It, in the last six years, as you looked at our C D B entitlement, it has consistently um gone up. Not, not terribly uh amount, but it has gone up um year over year. So I would expect that we would have um, uh, grant funds to, to be able to, at the. The pleasure of the council as we develop these action plans yearly to, to meet the goals. To look at a project annually, probably in the range of three hundred thousand, maybe a little bit more, depending on the, the funding year. To uh make improvements to grow such a project. Um, and I was speaking with, with Mr. Moore, he had uh many ideas. Um, and so we could look at seeing what it would cost to, to develop a baseball field there and what's fun to look like.
Thank you. That's what I was gonna ask, you know, he asked this company, what would it cost to do a baseball field? Maybe they'll give us a discount if we did them all at the same time.
I can, I can check and see if this particular one would do full-size baseball fields. I can check on that. They're called Urban Soccer Park is the company right now, so they're specializing in the soccer fields right now. But since they lay the artificial turf and are into the multi-sport, you know, fields and they might branch out to that, we could check.
And um, full disclosure, we would go out to bid. We, we're working to get information from somebody to be able to bring something forward, but we would go out to bid.
Typically, one artificial turf baseball field these days, lighted, is around one point five million. Uh, so just to give you an idea on that.
Okay, I was figuring about one point eight, but you're probably right. And you could put one with artificial infield, you know, with the different coloring and, and the dirt. But as a player, you think, oh, I don't know if I wanna play on that, cuz the ball comes hot. But it's a true hop.
Any other council members have any questions or, or comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have any questions. It's just a comment that uh, I'm very pleased to see the project that is placed before us. Especially when it's an emphasis to be used for the youth in the community. It's uh something that probably is long-hoped-for too, and hopefully it's something that will come to fruition very soon.
Thank you. Council member Carrillo?
Yes. I, I think it's exciting. Um, I, I love the photos that are provided. It gives you a, at least somewhat a visual. I like that it's um, you know, multi-sport and multi-surface. I, I like that with the lights. I think it's actually gonna be good timing. I'm, I'm surprised at the um fast timeline for, to have it all put together. But I do think it would be a good time, time for um, you know, as we start coming out of this. For the community and especially the youth to have something to look forward to. And um, just a side note, I also su- strongly support the um baseball field.
Thank you! No, but, uh, you know, but I agree, this, we need to give our youth something and it's time, it's been overdue, something nice that uh, they're gonna appreciate. And our whole community, I mean, even adults can play in this, and so especially we put a pickleball and, and uh make it a multi uh sport facility.
I uh, I, I had a conversation with Ted Smalley with T CAG, uh, you know, references some of these questions on how to leverage other funding, which. Um, restroom facility, I, I specifically, I was talking with him about restroom facilities, which. Measure R hasn't been used for that out of the bike and pad, but it has been used for other amenities such as parking lots. Um, there, there's been parking lots developed through Measure R as amenities to bike and pad trails. Uh, lighting, so i- it's not unreasonable to think that a restroom facility also wouldn't be.
I think I've asked uh, if that's possible, and he said it was, I mean.
It, it's really, yeah, he, he doesn't think it'd be the, within the intent of the measure for playfield development. But certainly for uh amenities that support bike and pedestrian. Bike, you know, to, to incentivize that and uh restroom facilities, those are all considered ancillary amenities to, uh, bike and.
Yeah, because that's next to a trail, we can put the restaurants closer.
Yeah, I, I, I discussed the concept with him. He was, he, he was very excited uh, about what this potentially could be to accentuate the existing rails to trails. And, and in fact, if, if I can, I, I, you know, there's gonna be a bigger conversation, I think, with the council from a planning and goal. Uh, with the, with the H P grant having been funded for the Union Pacific Railroad right away. Um, that provides Measure R. It's essentially an injection of another seven million of Measure R for bike and pad trail development and/or amenity development. So whether that, and I, I, I guess I kinda wanna put that on the council's um radar for that, that your bike and pad plan, as you've developed their priorities. You have the ability to now to kind of accentuate some of those that uh were perhaps lesser down in that. Cause they've been funded through another grant, so uh essentially there's seven million of bike and pad monies that have been made available to you for the development. Or improvement amenities along existing.
Does uh, does the nature of the way these, these fields are assembled or, or constructed provide any relief? Or make it easier en- environmentally uh for being able to, to have them in a location based on what? Anything like that?
We would still have the project um, uh, re- reviewed and evaluated by our, our on-call environmental consultant. That, that reviews our C D B G projects. Um, being of the fact, um, in, in field development, um, it is quite large of a site. So we would need to, to scope that out with them. I apologize, I don't have that answer at the top of my head. Um, but I would imagine that the being artificial turf and, and being um conscious of all the materials that are being used. That that would much def- definitely benefit the impact.
Okay, and, and council member?
I was gonna say, the, the artificial turf, you know, put it in, it will, the water will seep down and go to the aquifer. If we get, I don't know what kind of turf this is, but most grass turf, that's artificial, the water seeps through it. And it's still, you know, um, returns to the aquifer.
I believe Mr. Moore was also referring to that on the all-surface um, on, on the other surface as well, the multi, the multi-sport field.
Great, and, and I think, you know, adding, having things like lights and scoreboards. Um, uh, and, and those are great additions and actually add to the, to the excitement of uh being able to, to compete in a sport. Um, instead of having to um. Think about wishing you had lights or, or, you know, uh, a scoreboard, it's, it's, it's all right there, so. And I think even as far as like corporate games and things, there's, there's a lot of uses for, for these, these spaces, so.
And if I could, I, I, you know, putting on the economic development hat as Jason, I think, you know, you know, downtown synergy is always a good. Synergistic activity, which uh combines not only youth, but also adult activities, always good for downtown.
Exactly. Can you imagine how many soccer tournaments we can have there, you know, pull people, everybody wants to play on a artificial turf? I mean, we could pull people in all over. This would be fantastic. You know, I'm excited, uh, you know, again, your honor, I just wanna make a comment on a very good report. You know, staff has done a great job on this and I'm excited. And, and again, our entire staff, John, I want to tell you, you got the best staff around, I mean, no doubt. You know, I've been in three different cities and I tell you, I came back, you had some super people and they are very sharp and very thorough, and I wanna thank you guys for that.
I appreciate that, I, and I, I was on, I, you know, this has taken two years to get here. Like, that's the unsp- I mean, working through HUD and kind of their. Yeah, some of the council knows, this has been a winding road with HUD for two years, getting to where we're at now, so that's not been that easy. I appreciate Mr. Right Now, or, as buyers before, by Calderon, all of the work they've been, I mean. Uh, just to kind of tie this all together now, um, in terms of how we, and, 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 and there's just. And I really can't foreshadow that enough, that in goal-setting, you know, there's, there's some real opportunities. Uh, how can the community be better served with number of resources being leveraged together?
Okay, and so um, I know we've given some, some direction, but what, what more does staff need to specifically move forward with the item?
Thank you, your, your honor. I believe I have direction uh on the use of program income as well as the use of. Section one oh eight uh funds that were prior, priorly gonna be obligated to section one oh eight. What I would like to receive direction on is the reallocation of the funds that were previously allocated for the youth center operations um for this current year. As noted, um, the, in the, in the, in the plan, it, the, the, the funds would automatically go to first-time homebuyer. Um, our staff recommendation would be for the funds to be allocated for um business assistance for the business C, B A P C V. Um, to continue to expand that program as uh to assist the, the community there. Um, it. I believe council is aware that w- we have received a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home grant for a first-time homebuyer. I'm also received this week notification that we've made it to a second round for our Cal Home grant that we applied for, for first-time homebuyer. So it looks like we're gonna be, hopefully, um, cross our fingers, um, receiving more grant funds eh with that realization. Um, that, that's staff's recommendation for, for direction, but uh open to, to direction, obviously.
Okay, council? Any comments on that?
Please, I think I've dominated this, this item as far as council, nobody else, I don't think I've given anybody else a chance to speak, so I'm. You know, I'm for that, but I want someone else to, to jump in because I don't wanna dominate the whole.
You're in luck, because I think council member Penyloza is ready.
Yeah, I, I was, all I was gonna say was that I'm in full agreement with, with uh the recommendation uh from Jason, we just talked about um. Uh, putting those funds into, into that area, so um, I think it's fantastic that we're able to receive these grants. And, and continue to leverage funds to benefit the community around these programs that we have, so.
Thank you.
All right, anymore? Anymore, or is, is that sufficient direction?
So that would, just declare, so that would go into the business C D program?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
That. That consistent, Jason?
Yes, that, that would be for business assistance and we would, we will um use it for B A P C V.
Okay, great.
Which I believe is a program we, we're kind of oversubscribed at the moment, is that a fair estimate?
Correct, based on um current applications and contacts with, with uh businesses and with agencies that are in conversations with us. Right now, we lack thirty-six thousand dollars to fund them all.
So it's kinda, y- y- that would be helpful in terms of helping out that, that particular program.
Correct.
Sounds like a perfect fit to me.
Thank you for the direction.
Thank you, thank, thank you for the great item. Like I said, it's not always, it's not always that we get to see stuff, something that touches so many. Spaces and checks so many boxes at the same time. Okay.
Next item, next item, your honor?
Yes, please.
All right, so uh, I'll try to be uh, I'll try to be uh expeditious in this report. Yeah, before you this evening is your regular uh update, emergency, update on your emergency declaration, resolution of emergency. As council is aware, it made its uh initial declaration back on March seventeenth of twenty twenty. Um, which at its last meeting on February sixteenth, uh made the findings to continue its resolution of emergency. Um, since your last meeting, the state um provided guidance on indoor and outdoor recreation for both youth and adults, which was alluded to earlier. Um, uh, by council member Carrillo, that was reviewed by the uh COVID Ad hoc Committee and invited some city, uh, city activities. There's certainly been a continued impact to community events. Uh, we would right now be probably talking about the Irish Festival. Uh, it's that timeframe, which obviously still the ability not to have uh large gatherings is affected and, and likely is going to affect. Uh, Cinco de Mayo Parade, uh sadly for the second year row, as we continue to look forward into uh this year uh from community uh, community events. Um, currently right now, uh, project, under project room key, uh, whi- which is administered. Through the county and, and funds that they've received, there's ninety-five rooms that they indicate as being available under project room key. Uh, which currently, according to their report, as of today, seventy of the ninety-five rooms are occupied. So uh by, by the county's report, twenty-five of the rooms are currently unoccupied. Uh, uh, Toyota County is currently within the purple tier, and that's because one of the three. Uh, uh, Tuller County is currently within the purple tier, and that's because one of the three. Comparison bands are, is still in the purple or widespread. Uh, tier, which is the number of cases per hundred thousand, as a seven-day average, that is coming down significantly. Uh, as of today's report, it's at eleven cases per seven days, so we're, uh, in, and to enter the red tier, uh, which. Provides generally indoor dining, uh, that was one of the questions is. Our world communications, what's the guidelines for that? Uh, the state in the tier system has the red tier at, uh, seven, seven cases per hundred thousand, which allow for indoor dining. At twenty-five percent capacity, so I would anticipate if the case trends, um, continue as they were, certainly within a week or two. Uh, the county anticipates making those. Making that tier. Uh, the, uh, from a positive sense, already in the red tier is at five point one percent positivity, which. Even, uh, which is getting very close to what's called the orange tier, which is at five percent positivity, so that's indicating however many tests you have, what is the. Rates of positivity, which really goes to show the focus on testing and having people test, uh, to keep that positivity, uh, rate down. Uh, and then it's also important to note that the health equity index, which is one of the other things that has to be compared, is also, uh, currently right now in the red tier. Uh, at six point three percent, uh, which it would go to the orange tier at five point three percent. So things are, are, are trending in the right direction. But again, uh, Tuller County remains on the purple tier because of the cases per hundred thousand, you come down. From eleven as it is right now to, to less than, to less than seven per hundred thousand. Um, P D C, which has served as regional, regional care center, has no patients. As of their report today, haven't received any information as to what its standing will be, um, I, I will likely see, receive an update on Thursday. Um, but the last patient that was on, you know, receiving care there was exited yesterday. So as it stands right now, there's no patients, uh, being, receiving care at P D C. Um, uh, veterans continues to certain, veteran's memorial building continues to serve as a testing site, which they are all know, also now often serve, is now asked. Adding vaccines, um, that was kind of a choppy start last week, but, uh, told that they're trying to get that wrapped up. So to increase vaccine distribution, uh, in our county, and that would also be happening, like I said, at the Veterans Memorial Building. And the city's, uh, the city testing site continues to operate on Tuesdays. Certainly more community participation would be great, uh. Um, talk, talking about the, the vaccines that continues to be administered here locally. Um, according to the county's reports, more than fifty thousand Tuller County residents are now vaccinated. Continue on that, uh, effort. Uh, I'd previously talked about Tuller County being allocated thirteen million directly from the federal government to, for rental and utility assistance. Which the county's made its determination to combine its thirteen million with matching funds from the state. So they have, uh, they've directed their thirteen million to, to match against the state's fourteen million. To make available twenty-seven million in rental and utility assistance. That would be administered by the state through local nonprofits, uh, which are the established C set. Others that, uh, do that, but it just wanted to reinforce, uh, it was a way for the, for the county to increase the allocation. To Tuller County, which is open to all eligible Tuller County residents, um, either in cities or out. And that's under what's called S B ninety-one. Um, also, uh, since your last meeting, the governor, uh, li- legislation was signed by the governor known as the Golden State Stimulus. Uh, which was nine point six billion, uh, which provided in large part for individual and family. Uh, so, uh, financial support, but also incorporated additional small business assistance, uh, over two billion. Uh, for that, so we'll look forward to further information being made available as that relates to small business assistance. Uh, and then finally, um, uh, uh, as you've, as you've, I'm sure read, the federal government is considering a stimulus recovery package. Uh, of one point nine trillion, of which currently three hundred and fifty billion is allocated for states and local governments. Um, according to a. Spreadsheet that was released by the National League of Cities right now, Tuller County would receive under that formula ninety million dollars. And the city of Porterville by its allocation would receive twenty point seven million. That allocation, so, um. That concludes my report, uh, I did want to mention one other, there is a, and I, I believe it's gonna be taken up by the. Tuller County Regional Transportation Agency, which is discussions about providing free fares for folks needing to get vaccines. Across our county and, and how they get to testing facilities, so. Uh, at the next meeting of the T C R T A will be a discussion, I understand, about, uh, providing free fares. Across our county and getting those that need transportation to vaccine sites. And I would say with that, um, that's my report, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, uh, are, are there any questions from council members?
Mayor?
Yes?
If there are no questions, um, on behalf of the other council members, I move that we continue the order of local emergency.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second? Councilmember Stowe? Is that a second?
A second, yes.
Yeah, motion and a second, and, uh, can, Councilmember Penylosa, did you have a question?
No, I, I was just gonna get ready to vote.
Okay, yeah, I just was gonna, just hearing, hearing the information, it's, it's important, it's kind of like a marathon, that last mile is the. The hardest mile to, to run, so that the testing that we've been helping with is, is definitely more crucial now than ever, we just keep. Keep going and I'm glad to see the numbers going in, in the direction that we wanna, wanna see, so. Uh, with that, we can call for the vote.
Councilmember Corillo?
Hi.
Councilmember Penylosa?
Hi.
Councilmember Stowe? Councilmember Stowe?
Here we go, there we go.
Thought I was off mute, sorry.
Councilmember Stowe, did you?
I?
Sorry, Vice Mayor Flores?
Hi.
Mayor Ruth?
Hi, passes unanimously. Okay, and that brings us to the final.
Yeah, I figure our final scheduled matter this evening was, uh, from the consent calendar, item number seven, uh. City council member requested a gen item with regards to a local homeless update, item was pulled to request, Vice Mayor Flores, happy to answer any questions or. Providing further.
Thank you, uh, mayor, and thank you for that. Reason I pulled the item was that it was unclear as to what the request was. It's only to consider a local homeless update. And I'm saying, well, what is the local homeless update, since information has been provided? At the last council meetings, the, if we go back, we had a presentation by Turning Point. On that same day, um, Ms. Claudia Calderon provided the report of the homeless task force meeting. That same council meeting, there was a staff report. That outlined, and I'm looking at it right now, approximately five or six pages to that regard. With all the information with regard to the homeless and the services. And then that same day, I provided a homeless roundtable report. Then on the following council meeting, there was a report for the local initiative navigation center committee, so. This item is not clear as to the purpose of the scheduled matter.
I also, I, I just, I, I know Councilmember Penylosa, you, you may want to respond, but I also wanted to s- just, to say that I noticed that the item was up for an update. And that, um, I did have some of the same concerns, because we had some of the information, or actually most of the pertinent information updated. So we just wanted to make sure. I think that what, what, what you were anticipating from the item, because it's not really scheduled for an action. And, and planning in, in the regards to, um, any action would be subject to the budget. Talks that would happen around April, which isn't too far away from when this would be slated, so I think those are some of the, the questions.
No, yeah, uh, and, and thank you, uh, Vice Mayor and, and Mayor, um, you know, to bringing it to, to the attention to, to get clarification, so. Um, you know, and, and, no, I appreciate all the reports that were given, uh, I think I was more, being more specific to. Um, my, for me, it was more about, uh, what's going on at the, at the Tulley River. And, uh, and what's in the, the, what's going on with the sheriff and the eviction notice. And I didn't know if it was with the sheriff or with the chief, or how we could figure out to just get that information. Uh, and I was just looking at it from a prevent, preventative standpoint, just like an update of what's, what's going on, uh, uh, on, on the ground, uh, with that, because. Um, at the end of the day, even though, um, from my understanding, there's private property, uh, there. Uh, and people are getting, you know, got notices, um, you know, there, there may be the potential that, well, from my understanding, there's more people that got notices, so. I'm trying to figure out, like, how do we as a council just get the update, uh, directly, so that we're on the same page and we understand what's going on? And it just, um, just to keep in mind that if people are gonna be displaced, these folks are gonna come into the city, and so I just like, just to have that in the back of our head, if it's gonna happen. Then at least we're update and we, we're, we're, we know what's going on, because as of right now, I'm still conflicted of what I'm hearing. Uh, and it's gonna impact the city one way or another, um, and so instead of waiting until it happens, then we can at least know what we can anticipate. Uh, from, from what's really going on, uh, at, at the, on the Tulley River, so that was kind of the specific was gonna be, uh, what I was looking for an update was. For the, for us as a council to receive that information as to, um, what's really going on, uh, with the conflicting reports that I'm hearing as a council member. From the homeless community and then from the sheriff as well, and so I wanted to get like that direct, um, information for us to just know. What, what's happening and how we can just keep an eye out for possible, uh, you know, dozens of people getting evicted, and maybe those folks will just come into the city. And, uh, if, if we don't have anything to provide for folks, then how do we looking for proactive measures down the road, right? But just kind of that conversation, just of an update, so that was more or less what I was looking for, but, um. You know, totally, uh, you know, if, if the council feels that it's not something we need to do. Uh, I will, you know, concur to what the direction of the whole council as a whole body, uh, decide to do, so, uh, you know, um. But that's more or less, I, I don't know, that's kind of makes it a little bit more clear of what my intentions were with that item.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Stowe?
Yeah, I, I just wanna mention to the councilman, you know, I can, I can appreciate what you want, because you're, you're asking about, you know, law enforcement's. Of, of the homeless and, uh, and predictions of what may happen, so we can be proactive. But in the past, uh, whenever we had a situation like that, that's, it's a, a potential that may come up. Our police chief's been very good about informing us of this. Um, so I'm not sure if we need an update, because when we need to know something, he usually tells us. Um, and I don't know if that's okay, that's enough for you, but, you know, he's been very good about informing us what, what could potentially happen.
Yeah, and, and I think that, um, um, Councilmember Stowe, that i- if, if that's, if that's, um. If that's something that's bound to happen, for sure, you know, I know he gets us, uh, the chief, uh, does provide reports to, uh, anything that's happening, so. Uh, if that's a sentiment of the, the council, you know, I, I don't mind pulling, uh, this, this, withdrawing this item, uh, and just allowing for, for us to. Uh, have the chief eventually, you know, when the, something does happen, then we're made aware of what's, all we can do, um, but, but yeah.
You know, I appreciate your concern, because I have the same concern, but, you know, our city manager and chief, you know, they've been very informative to us. And so we can be, we can be in front of this, you know, when the time comes, you know, I don't think we need a monthly or weekly or. Uh, update until something, you know, because I trust their judgment, and they've always had good judgment of, uh, inform us when potential problems.
If, if, if I might suggest, um, so what we're discussing is an activity outside the city, outside of the jurisdiction of the police department. Uh, if, if it's this kind of, if that's really the interest that wants to be pursued, I, I'd recommend inviting the sheriff himself. If the council wishes to have the update, that not be, that not be secondhand information from the police.
I. Here, I have a, I have a thought on, on this, and I know that there's, there's a lot of, a lot of energy around this and, uh. Both the, by the, the folks residing at the river, um, there's a potential of a, of a lawsuit happening. Um, where also there is, um, the potential of funding through the, the federal money coming that, that could help. In regards, not just this, but to the impending rent eviction crisis that could hit. Some of our district constituents, and that, as we do talk about this. We may allow a little bit more time for those factors that we don't have control of to settle a little bit. Um, which would be the, the timing. To involve this subject along with the other, the rent eviction crisis that's coming, because. I think the last thing we wanna look for is, is a solution that we don't really have control over for a smaller segment. Only to have a larger segment flood in and take the, the help that we would, we would try to find for. The, the folks that, um, Councilmember Penylosa, you've been, uh, working with, so. I, I think that it may be more appropriate and, and also give our, our police chief. More time to, to look at it and correspond, but also for the dust to settle in some areas that we don't have as much. Control, or, or, um, we may be overextending ourselves trying to control. But that, that's my opinion, and I don't, I'm not criticizing the, the ability to bring an issue forward. I, I support it, but I just, I think that at this particular moment, it may be difficult for us to come to. A consensus, only because there's not really enough information for us to, to work with, let alone, um, within our. Our jurisdictional boundaries.
You know, and your honor, I agree with that, you know, we don't wanna be stepping on the sheriff's toe, you know, he has jurisdiction and he has a body that he reports to. And I'm sure he would, you know, if we invite him, he would probably come, but, you know, he's not required to come and answer that question. But anytime we can, you know, we can always pick up the phone and talk to our, our representative in this area, our supervisor. And he can give us that information and bring it back to us as one elected official or another, if you wanna, if you wanna pursue it that way, or you can just do it as an individual. And, and ask the sheriff, but, you know, but not as a, a council member, but as your, your individual self.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate the dialogue, um, and, uh, just kind of feeling the, gauging how, how we're feeling about this, I, I, I don't mind. Um, you know, I don't know how it works, if I just, uh, uh, withdraw the item, uh, and, and we can, you know, as, as mentioned by the mayor. As things kind of settle down, we get more of a, of a greater picture, that makes sense, uh, we can have, we can maybe possibly bring it back into conversation, but for now. Um, I don't mind, uh, you know, basically, uh, withdrawing the item, uh, as a, as a consent. Um, for, for a future meeting, so.
You can do that.
Okay. Do I have to make a motion, or?
Oh, you don't. Because if they don't take action on it, then there was no approval of anything one way or the other on it anyways, so.
Alright, well, thank you, appreciate the, the dialogue though on the conversation, thank you.
Yeah, and, and just from my standpoint, and, and it's not a dismissal of your, of your item, but it rather. Trying to fit where, fit it where we can fit it, to, to be productive, uh, and, and stay. Uh, where, where we need to be in, in our positioning, so I appreciate that.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
All I wanna say, it was to be proactive versus reactive, and I wanted a clarification, I thank Councilmember Penylosa for. Giving us the information, because we were a little clueless as to where it is you wanted to go with it, and I wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor.
Okay. So now that we've, um, taken care of that item, that. That brings us to oral communications, correct? Alright, do we have any communications?
Your honor, uh, no oral communications came in via email, or, um, there's actually no attendees at the moment that are.
wishing to speak.
Okay. And that brings us to other matters. So council member Carrillo, did you have any?
Ye- yes, I am, actually I have a few comments, I guess. And the first one is, uh especially after this meeting, I just wanna thank the staff um for the very, all the work and the very thorough re- research that you do um on these projects, provide us really comprehensive information to be able to make decisions. I wanna thank you for that, and I wanna thank you for the weekly meetings to just kind of check in and and provide more information um during the week on the things that we're working on. So I wanted to acknowledge the staff and thank you for that. The second thing I wanted to do was thank the community um for their participation in these meetings. I know that logging on virtually is not um easy. We always have technical issues. It's not easy to speak in front of um even virtual people. So thank you for the comments um and for the volunteers for our committees. Um and then the third thing I just wanna say is I want to make an announcement, a personal one, I guess, that I had my first uh grandbaby, my daughter had her baby just, he's just over a week old now. And um so that's a good, good thing. But part of the reason I wanted to mention that is because um it just reminds me, and I would like to share that with you to you know, just remain hopeful at this time. And thank you, Mr. Lawless, for the update on the tears. It maybe um doesn't sound totally hopeful, but it feels that way. And I mean, even the you know, increased testing and um our case cases are starting to go down and things like that. It's good to see that, hear that there's no uh patients out at the hospital and that down here. Um you know, we we don't have as, our hospital's not full. I mean, that's something I watch all the time, and it's very worrisome. So I I mean, I just share that announcement with you all, because um you know, so we have some remember to look at those things that we can be hopeful about. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Council member Stowe?
If I can find my mute button, boy, that thing's getting smaller and smaller each meeting. Once again, after this meeting, you know, it just reiterates the staff that we have. I can't tell people enough how well they, how outstanding they are. You know, I've worked at three different cities. And and I, you know, I wanna tell you that they were near as good as the staff we have at here at Porterville. You know, people may complain, but they do their job well, they're very thorough. They don't cut corners, they make sure it's right for the the safety of our citizens, and I appreciate that, and they work so well together. And we're working on skeleton skeletons crew. We don't have very many people working. And they get things done, so that means those people are working extra hours. And you know, and I just wanna thank them again. Thank John and you know, and you know, his administration, all department heads, but you have some outstanding people working underneath you, you know. I go by facilities, they're looking, they're looking better, and people are just, you know, they're doing a job and and rarely, I don't know how many complaints come into the city manager's office, but I used to get calls, quite a few calls and not working in other cities because of this, but rarely as a council person. I haven't got very many calls at all, and I appreciate that. And then that's because, you know, the efficiency of the staff, the expertise, and I really wanna thank them. And the last thing I have is we must get tested, people. You have to test. You know, if you want your businesses open, you want your restaurants to open, get tested. You just heard the city manager say we're lagging in that category, because we're not testing. And if we test, in a couple of weeks, we can have openings of our restaurants and businesses. You know, we can be in that category. So make sure you get tested, and this is clearly, clearly not even close to being over, so continue wearing your mask. And that's important. That's important that we get to those tears, and we cut down the infections, and we just have to do this. So the last thing I wanna add is be positive, test negative.
All right. Thank you. Council member Penyloza?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I just want to, uh I just can't believe how quick the year is already going. Uh we're already in March. Uh and uh it's uh have, you know, it's, this month is Women's History Month, so um you know, just uh I hope that we all uh can can research the amazing woman uh in in our in our in the in in our country and internationally, and just recognize them and and learn a little bit more. So um my hope is this month to to learn a little bit more about uh some some amazing women that have done amazing things in in our history. So um the other thing is, uh I know I had the opportunity to uh virtually join uh the Westfield Elementary School, and I know I did I did see uh the vice mayors and the mayor's name on the list, and I I got some 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 amazing kin- uh transitional kindergarten. They weren't even kindergarten yet. And I was just like, it was just, the energy was so um so uh it was so sweet and and it was just so so cute just to see uh, you know, these 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 kids, these children just uh trying to uh hear a story virtually. And uh so that was pretty neat. Um and the last thing I would like to just emphasize is uh to please uh support our local businesses uh and nonprofits. If you can donate to them, uh local ones, please do so. Uh and if you can continue just to shop locally by purchasing uh every now and then a dinner or lunch uh at a local business. Um I know that they they are going through difficult times and I'm very grateful for 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 the for us as a council uh to uh continue to to support the nonprofits by providing uh some mon- for monies as well as the businesses, of course. But um and and then, of course, with that, um you know, please uh stay safe and healthy and uh and again, um just uh wear your mask and and if you can get tested or and get vaccinated, I would recommend it, so.
Great. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanna begin by saying thank you to the Burton School Pathway for the amazing uh beautiful uh video honoring our firefighters. That was as we continue to work for the resiliency of our city, that was very healing. And uh I just wanted to say thank you. It was um beyond words. There are no words to that. Uh yesterday, within my kindergarten class at Westfield, I was in Ms. Fafon's class, and they wanted me to read a lot tons of books. Thank goodness I only showed them two. And the teacher kept muting the students because they would unmute themselves, and then she would mute me at the same time. So it was very engaging, because they were just as excited as I was to read, and of course, you know, the cat in the hat and all of that. So I made it a point to dress up with a hat for the kids, and they, I think they were more interested in the hat than they were in my reading. But that was very good. And I also wanna take a brief moment, because when we talk about staff and I mentioned earlier in the census count, the Porterville Committee with, it was Jenny, Claudia, and Jason, of course, with the drive to that. I am going to read this little certificate that I'm going to drop back off of the US Census Bureau hereby recognizes the city of Porterville Complete Census Count Committee as an invaluable member of the two thousand twenty Census Community Partnership and Engagement Program. We appreciate the efforts you made in making the partnership program a success and helping achieve a successful two thousand twenty census. See, it's right here. I couldn't wait to to read it to you, but I will be dropping back off and uh that was another thing that I wanted to share. On a side note, I just wanna share as a conversation and not conversation, as an informational that back, I wanna say sometime in September of two thousand twenty, I shared out and reported out in one of our homeless task force meeting that I had asked a question with regard of the probability uh and el- of an eligibility worker on site. And at that time, I was patiently waiting for a response. So I reached out not only to um the chair of the county task force, but our own district supervisor, which started putting the momentum of conversation. Let's see where that goes. But I also wanted to share with the council, as you recall, back in October, uh I had reached out to um and we had had a meeting with uh Supervisor Townsend and Mr. Lawless and Mr. Britt with regard to mosquito, and we came to a consensus and sharing it at council with regard to a an a campaign. I followed up with that conversation and those come with that conversation, there will be outreach, so we will probably be seeing something to that effect. Yes, I wanna remind everybody to stay healthy. I had my second vaccine. It affected me a little different than uh it may have affected others, but it was to be proactive. And let's be a part of a solution here for everyone to stay healthy and to be safe. And that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Well, I wanna echo some of the comments about testing um in our area and some of the numbers. That's some of the only way that we're gonna be able to to keep moving forward. Um I know that um one of the things I wanted to mention too is that with the business assistance is that it even even if early on, a business was critical of us or critical of what what we were trying to do, it doesn't mean that that we're not willing to to help. And I know as time goes on, as things get more difficult, please don't hesitate. If you're qualified for for any of this assistance that we have, we're not, we're not looking back at at criticism about early things. It's it's all about keeping as many people employed and in business um and getting through this altogether. So so I just wanna make sure to say that um I I don't have any hard feelings about any criticisms. Um I'm just glad that we may have some funding available in the future to help people. Um regardless of what position, regardless of where they where they sat financially before or now, um hopefully we can help. Um the other thing I wanted to mention too, um well, a couple of things. I I also read to a group of first graders at Westfield. And actually, I forgot to take the books down, so um the Banjo and the Dr. Seuss books are no uh commentary on my uh reading ability. It's just uh, it was left there for when I was reading to the uh the first graders who are also were very energetic uh and uh enjoyed green eggs and ham. But really, with, there's been comments about the staff here at the city and and it's, it's hard to believe that during this circumstance with COVID and even prior to to that and even through the election issues and all the political differences that the bar can be raised, that people can work to uh beyond what what, you know, they could do. They could just roll over and phone it in and live off grants and funds just to hopefully get through, but that's not what I see. I see staff with sophisticated, thoughtful plans and ideas, utilizing funds coming in for things that are gonna benefit us um now and in the future. So I I'm I'm very grateful for the staff that we have, and I see a lot of the names still on there, and and if you wanna show your 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 face, you're more than welcome to, but I I just know that I I appreciate you um and everything that you do. These uh these reports are are impressive. Your dedication is very impressive, and I know that I feel comfortable speaking for the council, that we appreciate everything that you do and and um uh we're just glad that we're able to have these effective agendas, these effective meetings virtually. Um and and that has a lot to do with your help, so thank you very much. And uh that's all I've got to say to city manager.
You know, I I I really appreciate the, they are an extraordinary group of people to work with. Um uh I appreciated council member Penyloza's talking about this being um, you know, recognizing uh re- women for their contributions. Uh it's been a I've had the privilege to work uh with two extraordinary women on city council uh in Virginia Grohl and Martha Flores. And now with uh Kelly Carrillo, I look forward to those those relationships. And then I've been blessed to work with Julia um and Maria, the those three folks uh have I'm a better person because of working with them. And uh and then I I appreciate the connections that I began to make with Claudia and Amy. I have enormous respect for their talents and skills, and we're blessed to have them uh at the city. So I pre- uh appreciate all those comments. It's a remarkable group. Sorry, the sorry, guys, uh not your month. So uh but I wa- wanted to take that moment. I appreciated the opening provided by council member Penyloza on that, that to recognize them just uh how instrumental they've been in my life, and I'm a better person. Um and uh uh did wanna say, you know, and 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 I I I I wanna give credit again to uh Luisa Zavala, who was the grant writer for a very competitive ATP grant uh uh which is providing some options uh for the community going forward. So uh yeah, she was a part of this team uh and part of the city council uh 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 team for uh before she went over to community development. So I wanna give her uh due credit for her talents uh and a very difficult grant and the first time that she did it. And uh and with that, uh uh we have ethics training next Tuesday. Five thirty. Given by our except by our exceptional city attorney.
All right.
Speaking of you, may I say one more thing?
Please.
I wanna welcome my, our latest addition, the city attorneys, David Yanez. David, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you formally yet, but you work with a fine firm and and welcome. And thank you.
Thanks, council member Stowe. And uh yeah, so those of you who I haven't met, uh I'm David Yanez. I'm really uh fortunate to work with Julia and I did nothing but impressed with uh all of you uh at the city of Porterville. So I look forward to working with you more.
All right.
You know, I I I did have to mention this. Uh Maria is so quiet. She doesn't even have a name on her screen. I I Fernando brought that to my attention. He goes, I don't even know how she how she's able to not even have a name.
I tried changing it too, and it 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 didn't let me.
You know, I don't know, I don't know if you know this, but actually I gave her a no button. It it's not even an easy button, it's a no button, and she proudly has it on her desk, so I told Fernando, that's probably what she's done. She just said, no, no Fernando, you may not uh put my name on my screen.
It's the black tape that's over her camera.
I'm very familiar with that no button she has.
Oh, yes. Uh every, uh if you work at the, if you're a department head, you know that button well. So uh but they, they, thank you.
Uh thank you all, and and I I appreciate uh again, your patience with the the technology and holding these virtual meetings and be able to uh conduct a full slate of business. And uh just shy of ten o'clock, so we're shaving some time off of the meeting, so I appreciate that. And and with that, uh wish everybody a a good night and call the meeting adjourned.
Are we going in a closed session?
Yeah, so yes. Sorry, I forgot.
Sorry.
It was ten o'clock. We got session items.
Yeah, I know.
Over for some, over for some of us.
We'll see you in closed session.
Yes.
We'll go back to the original.